I made coffee.
I would say no, because I don't normally buy my coffee. I was out at coffee this morning.
Yeah.
So I stopped at the gas station.
It's nasty. Well.
And they have a machine down there and it said creamer, so I put it under there and hit the button and it was powder.
Oh.
And like boom.
It quackled.
Yeah.
And now I've opened it and it's just got like this weird skin like that.
Almost looks like swan milk.
I just said that in the wake of, sorry, house control or whoever, gas station.
Get tested, Sean. Do it online. They can send you a test. You send it down to North Carolina. And that'll open up a whole new stream to you. You'll find out. You might just be a carrier like me. But if you got one bad genome, your liver's not working right.
Great. I put my liver through that. Did it talk?
That's my shit.
My liver needs all the help it can get. I'm killing it with thought.
Yeah. Yeah. I did a quart of rum a day for many, many days of my life.
I'm gonna wake up at some point.
Have you got one of the budget books that isn't on the list to come so that she doesn't have to turn off everything for me?
Well, she's got a couple different options. Uh, let's see. Just that version one, right two. I'm not trying to spray, okay? You have two different versions, don't you?
Yeah, there's the same ones, just they're more displayed.
Okay. As a general fund?
Yeah.
Okay.
Heather, I've been meaning to tell you, I keep forgetting that. Right, and the last meeting I said I was gonna get ahold of two engineers that I knew about doing some of the, yeah, and they're all so swollen for this and they can't see our project, so.
Unfortunately, that's not in common with everybody anymore. Everyone's so busy with everything. It seems like. I will reach out to some other folks. Appreciate you checking with Sean.
Write it all down, because when recession hits, everybody will be looking for it.
I know. I know, you're right. I mean, you're right. We could tell they get labor and.
Hey, Dan. Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
My coffee's not assuming.
I made coffee.
Is there any coffee cup that I can get back there?
No, you grab it.
Yeah, use a.
I found a clean one.
Use a clean one, yeah, that's the only idea.
And if you use clean.
I grabbed Courtney's, because I'm like, I want to be clean.
I have the four cog meeting replacement.
It was interesting.
Yeah. We had a lot of people show up.
Uh, Barb was here. Um, Norma was here. Dan was here.
Dan was here.
Um, there's another lady.
Yeah, I know that other lady.
She looked familiar, but I.
I thought she said she was from Richmond. Do you know where she was?
That was Sarah from.
Oh, that's who it was.
I knew her. I knew she looked familiar.
Yeah. Who was she?
Sarah Spoons from Southwest Michigan General Chamber. She works with Arthur Hamcheck.
Um, who else was here?
Barb was here, but they were all township residents. None of the city residents were here. None of the plan commission was here, except for you.
Right.
Which is same thing marijuana, they didn't show up. They didn't bother coming.
Kevin's in Hawaii. I don't know where Ralph and Ralph. Well, Jason actually has COVID, so Ralph's at Audi. Jason's from.
Well, yeah, the.
Jayber Audi has. Good morning, Barb.
Good morning.
Hey, Barb.
Woo, I got that turned up.
What they are, uh, are those mics? Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's weird, because those speakers work really well back there. I didn't realize how loud they were, but.
Yeah.
It sounds like he was shouting at all I said. Morning.
Good morning. Good work.
If you look at this sheet right here, this is the reason that Heather's been here working on. Um, we got this laid up Tuesday, Wednesday.
Yeah.
Which is what changed her entire budget that she'd already had done.
Can you come to me and talk about this a little bit? I'm trying to understand it in the email and I figured.
It's rather complicated.
Let's see if you can tell us what it means.
It's a strange airplane.
It was rather. Rather complicated here, you know, I was having a hard time.
Yeah, well.
It's a weird.
I hope it's explained at this meeting.
Take a class on Headley. And that will help.
I'll be four hours, so whenever you're ready, Heather, we can.
Oh. All right, I think I do. I will apologize though, because I'm gonna be starting to do them just back and forth, but. So if you wanted to, whatever you wanted to call it over there and all.
Sure. We call the special meeting of the city commission. Today is Saturday, May twenty first at seven hundred and two. I'm meeting the order. Any more, please?
Tennyson.
Here.
Weeden.
Here.
Dowie.
Here.
Money.
Fred.
Swam.
Here.
Go for it.
I'm not sure where you want to start.
Yeah, just go ahead and jump right in. So, um, for our public as well as the commission, the reason for the very last minute change to a good portion of the budget is due to something called the Headley override, which some of you have probably heard in passing. And what the Headley override is, is it's a constitutional amendment to the Michigan State Constitution. I believe it was nineteen eighty-two, sometime in the late seventies, early eighties. And it's named for the individual who was pushing it. Essentially what it did was it took every local municipal budget in the state of Michigan at the time and froze their budget in place so that every year you can't have your budget be any higher except for adjusted for inflation. Which is a strange thing to do, but that's what the state did. And then they coupled it with something called Proposal A, which was a ballot initiative that was done shortly thereafter by just the public wanted to put that on the ballot. It was successful. When those two things interplay together, um, neither party realized that the laws would read in such a way that when a municipality grows, like we did, we grew very substantially. Excuse me, substantially. I have some records in here I can show you. Um, depending on the sector, whether it was industrial, commercial, residential, anywhere from eight to one percent last year, which is.
Pretty impressive.
Yeah, very progressive. Um, but in situations like ours, when you grow exponentially in a short time period and you grow faster than the rate of inflation, because of those two things working together, um, there's a calculation that county equalization does, and they basically say you grew so much, now your tax base is large enough that you would exceed that previous Headley override. So we're going to force you statutorily to roll back your, um, millage rate. So effectively, they said we could no longer have the same millage we had before, even though we used to even have some room to go higher. They lowered it below the level that we used to have as wiggle room and even below that still. So it was a really substantial reduction. Now, overall, it's supposed to have a net effect on our revenue. That's not necessarily what happens because of Proposal A. And it's really complicated why that's the fact, but those two things just read together in a way that the legislature didn't have, is the short version. So I went back through, um, had to do a lot of haircuts on the budget, but we were in a good position to begin with, so I'm still comfortable with where we're at. Um, and I'll also preface this by saying, anything in this budget similar to last year, a budget is just a projection and plan for the future. None of it is ever set in stone. We can amend the budget and every single meeting should be so desired. And I anticipate that we do, will do some amendments this year, um, especially after we have our new full-time treasurer come aboard and if she'll want to take again or in our budget make some suggestions. There's also digital versions.
Sorry.
Yeah, I think Kerry's over. Yeah, I had one. Alright, sorry, go ahead.
Nope, you're fine. So this letter right here is the one that talks about that Headley override. This is what we got from equalization, uh, just a couple of days ago. I was unfortunately at a conference, they sent it. So the calculations show that our twenty twenty-two total taxable value, because we can't charge the millage on assessed value only taxable, um, is one hundred million, one hundred nine thousand and thirteen dollars. When they calculated that all out, um, it came down to this other page here. Shows what our reductions and millage rate are. And we have two separate millages that are impacted by the Headley override. We have our general operating millage, which is the first one. So that one is being reduced. It's going all the way down to sixteen point nine seven nine three, whereas previously it was seventeen point six, so a very substantial reduction. Um, dial ride, even though that's a voted, um, millage, supposed to be at one point oh oh, also impacted by Headley. That is being forced to be rolled back into, um, zero point nine eighty-four six for the mills. So it changed the revenue side of both those projections essentially.
Now, they're gonna reassess, is that reassessed in December? I see the extraction data is this number.
The events, so they don't reassess the, um, Headley override, but that's when our voted on dial ride knowledge expires if in this next election cycle, the public does not vote for you yet.
Well, it's gonna be on the August, just in case.
Now, following page are some numbers that were prepared by our, um, in-house assessor, Mindy Cole, to talk a bit more about the breakdowns when you're looking at commercial, industrial, residential. Anyways, curious to deep dive any of that.
I love, I love that.
That's the thing.
Yes, and that's to, to your point, Sean, that's something that, um, even though I'm exhausted because I had to do that, I'm thrilled because it means what we've been doing for the past year has been extremely successful.
That's what I was, I mean, I think this validates everything we've been doing. And I think Mark will agree, like, we've been saying for four years, it takes time to turn this aircraft carrier around, but I think this shows that we have to turn it around.
Yes.
And, I mean, to me, this is the, the best news we've gotten in a long time, in my opinion. And I think we should be bragging this up left and right and sharing it at meetings and putting it on our, every page that we've got.
Yes, absolutely. I encourage any of you in talking members of the public to let them know that your decisions as commissioners and our efforts as staff have allowed us to be able to effectively reduce the tax burden of the average citizen of Buchanan while providing even more services because we viewed it as a growing pie scenario. If you have a better served community, more people want to move in and invest and that subsidizes the effective tax burden for the average citizen. And that's in effect what happened.
Yeah, and I think it can only, it's only gonna get better.
I believe that's the case.
Yeah.
What was the net effect on the budget from us?
Um, I did not get a chance to calculate that. But I can do that on later.
I just, I asked that because of kind of what you're saying earlier. It sounded to me like we, we, did we lose whatever?
Yeah, so, well, the original projection, um, was, let me go back and look at the numbers.
Well, because our millage was seventeen point seven and now it's sixteen nine.
So it went from one million eight hundred thousand to a million six fifty-four, so not quite two hundred thousand, but close to. So that's a healthy little shape I had to, I placed, sort of, fit it in there, but I do believe I did so successfully. And still was able to capture some of the public policy, um, proposals that I want to go through with, um, you guys today, that are just proposals at this point. And I can easily take them back out, uh, before I submit the packets. As soon as we're done here, I'm gonna make any changes you guys recommend and submit the packets so that it's ready for review and then, um, approval on Monday. So I'll go through especially the highlighted sections. I've highlighted areas where there's a substantive change that's worth note. So I do apologize that the print is rather small, but to make it large, it makes it somehow under pages long, which is equally covered somewhat in a different way. So the first one obviously that I highlighted was the change in real property taxes, which we just went over the reason for that and what that change was. Um, there is another substantive change that I put under miscellaneous licenses and permits. And that's an increase for revenue collected from various permits issued by the city, um, to include anticipated, um, rental inspection fees that are not yet implemented, but I will do this next fiscal. As well as potential business registration fees, which was discussed today during the zoning kickoff.
What's that?
That is something that is recommended in order to have a tool to more readily assess where home businesses are taking place, as well as keeping an eye on our commercial stamp for downtown. One of the things we want to have part of the zoning that was discussed previously at the commission, commission level is trying to maintain a balance, a good mix of commercial in our downtown. And the only way for us to really validate that in a way that's enforceable is we have to have those businesses officially register with us in some way and formally state what their type of business is. Then we're gonna compare that. We haven't decided yet if it's gonna be a square footage analysis or linear square feet on, you know, the main drag, but to some effect, try to come up with like a percentage to say that cannabis can only be, you know, thirty percent of the downtown footprint or whatever that might look like. So that's, that's a way to achieve that. Now, the other side of that coin is in the zoning talks and also just from my own observations. I think, um, last year, one of the big things I proposed in the budget, and I think has been very successful, um, was the creation of roles for community development director and then also main street manager. And this time I'm gonna propose the creation of another director level role, um, that I think will ultimately be budget neutral in about two to three years. Potentially even budget neutral in, in this year, depending on how the burden fees go. And that is the creation of a director of housing and code enforcement. I think that's a next step in our community. I think we've, we've done the hard work of building a base to attract business. The business is very interested. We, we've successfully done that. Not that we're gonna quit, but I think it's a good time to pivot and try to resolve some of those problems that are more facing our residents. And I think those particular problems from what I've observed and have heard from others are people who are living in their homes who need housing assistance. So if we could have someone dedicated to trying to get MISHDA grants, other housing related grants, and help administer those grants so that folks can stay in their home, fix their home, and affordably do so. Um, the other side of that coin is the rental inspection program and code enforcement. Both of those, I think, are very vital to make sure that our housing stock in Buchanan is of the quality that our residents deserve, that it's safe, sanitary, all of those things. Right now, from a staffing perspective, we simply lack the capacity to do that well. And those are things that, in my opinion, and I think anyone would, who's been in that field would tell you, you don't do it at all unless you're gonna do it well, because you're just gonna create legal liability for yourself. So I think in order for us to do it well, we need a director who's gonna administer those programs. So I do think again that that will ultimately be budget neutral, but I do have some money set aside to create that position if approved and offer a starting salary of forty-five thousand to try to get someone to get that program up and oversee the rental inspections, help us write and administer grants for housing, and oversee just general light code enforcement.
I think if it helps enforce our organs. You know, one of the things that came up at the, at the meeting yesterday, because we were talking about zoning, was a lack of cracking down on. Code or, yeah, code enforcement. So I think, I, I think that's something that we need to focus.
Does that, does that position need to be two different positions right now as it gets started? Or is it something that can be combined as one until it grows to a point where?
So I envision it as, it's an individual whose role is director of housing and code enforcement. It's just one individual covering those two. Is that what you mean?
I mean, like, they're the one doing the inspections as well, not hiring two separate people.
Potentially to a degree, but most likely we're gonna have our fire department part timers do a good amount of the inspections. They've already been to a lot of trainings to that effect and have an interest in that.
Is it painter, is it painter, John?
Yeah.
Was he the one that was doing all that?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I thought.
That was supposed to, it was for the businesses, right? And so we've had to push that over to residential, I think, was our original intent?
I think you're right.
Yeah, I was just saying, that's, that's the original intent on that whole thing is to, to move them into the residential area.
So my question is, if you create that position, what does that do to like Dick Man, Guy? Are, are we going to lose like some of those code enforcement hopefully? I mean, I don't see the need of Dick Man.
It's, it's going to definitely evolve and potentially change in that way. It just depends on once that person comes in, has an opportunity to better assess that, what their recommendation is.
Is that one of me super critical of anyone who's not here to defend themselves, but I don't see that job getting done right now, to be.
That, that's a comment that we get frequently, so I would like to try something different.
So where are you on that? You have an offset from the police department there?
Yes, so initially those two, um, positions, the part-time positions for Dick Man and Richard Guadacat would roll over and be supervised by this new director. And then the fate of those roles would ultimately be decided by the recommendation of that director, if that makes sense.
Code enforcement.
Because it's also standalone.
This, who did this report to?
It would be a director level position, so they'd report directly to me. So to that degree, I was very conservative with putting in forty-five thousand. Um, if, if the commission wants me to consider different rates, obviously the more you offer, the higher quality candidate you can get. Um, I will say that if, kind of how successful we are in our recruitment, if we can get someone with good grant writing skills, especially who has prior experience in the field of housing. Um, in the last several years, MISHDA has not had much available for the type of grant incentives that I'm talking about, that they used to have five to ten years ago. But, um, the conference I was just at, it sounds like they are now funding that at the state level. It has not yet been appropriated, but it sounds like it will be, and that they're planning to have substantial monies available for those types of grants. So if we have someone well versed in that, um, area, who's able to leverage applications for those grants, I think it will more than pay for itself just from that side. But again, so just like many things that are new, it's somewhat of a roll of the dice, but I feel like it's a very safe roll of the dice that will have exponential benefits for the housing stuff and the quality of life in Buchanan.
Yes, you, you're gonna be looking at a person that can do dual roles.
Yes.
Not just somebody that goes out and gets garage sales signs off utility poles.
No.
So.
I'm, I'm looking for a skilled administrator who can really, you know, need to do some high level inspections as checks, but ultimately be better at training some of our cheaper part timers to do that work, especially, um, some of our already qualified fire department, um, part timers who are willing to do that.
So, two questions, anyone? Director level, five over right? Forty-five thousand, if today's entire.
That's what, it's, it's red.
I don't think we're gonna get any talent.
Yeah, so, want to see what you guys thought about where you would be comfortable.
I think you need to, I think you need to factor a higher salary into the budget and see if that still makes sense at that point.
I think, I think it's gonna be hard if I'm trying to.
I initially put in sixty-five. I thought that.
Is it?
And is that person gonna, or is he gonna do the rental inspections too?
They're gonna administer the program, not necessarily do all the inspections, but administer it.
And then going back to last week's meeting and listening to the thought council on how tough it is for our community to get any special grants because of our income base and opportunity for our designation. I mean, how, how competitive are we really towards those grants?
So the way it was described to me is the ones that I'm envisioning and describing that are the ones that are geared towards folks who are already in their homes. Usually it's people who qualify individually and that person is helping them get individual grants or showing need of multiple parties writing for a large grant and then just individually showing that they're eligible. So it's more on a case by case basis with that type of funding through MISHDA, rather than the community itself has to qualify as low mod, which is the case, if that was the case, then you're right, we would not be eligible. But the way it was described to me and the way it previously used to be administered is that it's, again, looking at the individual homeowner, are they, um, not even necessarily low mod, but now they use a term called ALIS, um, which is basically your, your asset limited. So even if you are above the federal property threshold, you can still qualify if you can show that your expenses, your, your regular expenses, your mortgage, or this or that are such that based on your income, you still are very limited in your expendable income.
Which is most of them.
Most of, it is. Those folks who are paycheck to paycheck, which is so many.
Jumping just ahead a little bit, just so I can get my head in the right frame of mind, how many, how many FTEs are we preparing for to add into the new budget this year?
So that is the only, um, director level position, and then I have one other. Just, I can zoom out a second here. This is, I'm gonna let you zoom out. Um, I have a proposal to make some changes in some of the other, um, departments, like for instance, I'll jump right to them, just because you brought it up. Um, we're gonna be recommending on Monday, um, Tim Giness will come and present that we offer the position of acting chief of police, like we've already spoken before, to Harvey Burnett. That will allow Tim to make that transition because of the union agreements. We have to have that position open and posted for a certain length of time before we can formally give the position to anybody. So he can't officially become chief until everyone in the police department's had an opportunity to apply. Um, but then we anticipate that likely effective at the first of the new fiscal year, July one, after those application periods have ran. Now Tim can fully move over to the public safety director role. Harvey can move into the police chief role if there are no other applicants. And that allows that progression that we've already talked about to take place. So that's budgeted for. Um, another progression similar to that is internally, um, we've had talks, myself and Mike Baker, a lot with Clay Weaver. And we've found him to be very amenable of late to taking on more of a leadership role in the DPW, which has been very beneficial to the department as a whole. There is a position available for, um, public services lead, or I think maybe it's street department lead, I don't remember, but it's that terminology. Now, I guess it is qualified as public service lead. So he would be moving from Sexton to public service lead is what we're proposing. And then Nick Bailey, who is his junior currently at the cemetery, will be bumping up to the Sexton position. So that's also contemplated in this budget.
And then does Nick get replaced? A body replacing?
Yes, yes.
And then we have a body replacing Harvey or not?
Um, we do not have a body replacing Harvey, but what we do have is, um, we hired a new officer a few months back, um, named Nick. Um, for, for reasons we can't get into, he's no longer with the department.
Sure.
We did have just a couple of days ago, um, an offer from one of our part timers, who's currently a full timer with the sheriff's department, willing to come aboard full time and take that spot, which had already been budgeted for. So not a new role, but a, had been empty.
We're already two officers down from last year, right?
We are, we were one full time officer down after Nick left, and with this new individual coming aboard, we'll be back to full staff.
But I believe there's still a request for an additional one.
That we're looking, we're exploring the possibility of through a cops grant, adding a new role so that we can put in a, like, basically a school liaison officer. That is not in this budget. Um, that would be very dependent upon if we actually received that grant and at that time it would, I would come forward with a budget.
Will I be able to? Did we replace Dave?
Yeah, that, that was the individual Nick that's.
That was Nick. And then this other person, and we still be one now potentially. I mean, we're full with this other.
Yeah, once this other individual comes on board, we'll be full staff compared to previous year.
Have we ever considered cutting thirty percent?
Well, I, I was just gonna say, and I brought this up to Heather, she came to push back a little, which is quite amazing. But after the last meeting when Andy was kind of giving us his dread and horrible news meeting about where we are, I had suggested that I think if you look at our budget and you look at the the biggest number in there is our police force, I, I question whether or not that's really necessary in our community. And I had asked him, we're looking at ways to maybe cut that a little.
So that was a tough one for me, because I was thinking, you know, we're gonna need to add a police officer to improve our downtown time, and not, not really a school resource officer, I don't know. Maybe someone can explain why it's a school resource officer and not a larger focus on downtown, what we've been feeling the most pain.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any major.
Because without it being an increase to our budget, we have to utilize that, they call it cops grants. Because without it being an increase to our budget, we have to utilize that, they call it COPS, COPS, I forget what the COPS stands for, it's a federal grant. And that limits it to school liaison officer.
But it does help cover some of our ministry.
Correct, so, in the end, it's going to allow us to have a shift where we can devote some more time, you just, you can't say that that's what you're doing.
Sure.
If that makes sense.
No, I got you, I mean, and just in terms of the budget, though, I was thinking, that was gonna be one of the, I was prepared to say yes to another officer.
To another.
For the downtown, more, solely focused more on downtown because of, I think it was, if somebody's, if there's an arrest, there's an hour and a half, is that what the company?
Yeah, it was because there's.
Yeah.
Because of the, uh, the sheriff's department and the state police, you know, it's always the closest.
Yeah, and Tim says that that's, that support for them is, is difficult, so we're left wide open with no officer in town.
I get, um, mine, I guess, I guess my comment was not necessarily a director level in this budget, but from a, from a much higher view, maybe looking forward. I think we're in a position where we have to consider all options. One of, and I know they are gonna offer feathers, but I didn't looking at the things that we have to do with our water, um, I, I just think we need to think about what we can do differently that would save money. And, and one of them would be the police department, and if, if there's any cuts possible. And secondly, and I know Larry's not gonna like this, would be considering doing something with our fire department and joining with our local fire departments as a way to cut it. And it's just the reality of where we are today.
That, that's been in the mix since I got off the fire department, you know, in ninety-eight. I mean, you know, we've talked, there's been talk about that for years. And actually, it's not a bad idea, but centrally located, you know, it would have to be more in this area as opposed to a rural, rural area. Uh, because of our downtown and everything, you know, so, that was always the big bone of contention on that whole thing, because, you know, the township's always fought over, you know, who should go where.
Right, sure.
But, uh, going back to the police, um, probably one of the biggest things that we hear about is, you know, have a cop downtown. And I mean, uh, I, I don't know how you, how you alleviate that, uh, and if we do, you know, cut that budget somewhat, you know, that's gonna, that's gonna take that cop out of downtown. I mean, they're doing a pretty good job right now, I mean, I see them there quite often, so, um, yeah, I don't know.
I'm just looking at, I mean, I think you could explore anything, you could look, you could look at the equipment that we purchased, you could look at vehicles, you could look at, I mean, if we're potentially going to move them somewhere. Um, that could be a remediation, I mean, that's a price cut.
That would be theirs, yes.
I mean, that's a price cut, so, I mean, there are things that I think we could look at that would get that number down in the budget when it comes to police force. When fire, let's back up just a minute here, when fire chief, when we hired Nick, that was the intent, or having another officer downtown on foot more often, right? So, he wasn't a replacement for Dave? Correct.
I, that's how I saw it back when Nick joined.
We didn't, we didn't approve, since I've been here, we didn't approve a new add to staff for the police department.
No, the, the budget hasn't been amended up to allow me to do that, it's been discussed that we wanted more focus downtown. So, Tim and I discussed in the hiring process, that whatever officer we brought on board, we would task them with having more full-time downtown. So, it's more a transition of, you know, the new person having this more intensified role downtown, as opposed to an additional FTE that we didn't have in the budget.
So, might not have directly replaced Dave, but their focus was supposed to be in that area more, so, yeah, I took it. So, backing up again, sorry, we kind of sidetracked there, I'm, I think you have more FTEs that you put in, like, right, or something like a waste water, or, or stormwater position as well?
So, so, yes and no, so that one, it's not a full, um, additional FTE. What I'm, uh, proposing right now for, for twofold reason, is an increase in pay, um, specific to Derek Gordon.
Yeah.
He's extremely overqualified for the position that we have him in, but that's an amazing thing for us, and, and for a lot of reasons, we want to have that redundancy in licensure. I'm sure any of you are aware of how vital those licenses are, and also how competitive they are, um, we, he currently gets job offers all the time, he wants to continue working here. But, um, in, in order for us to keep him, we need to give him a pay increase, just because.
Because we've already lost someone, but I was, for the same reason.
Yeah.
And I believe he's equal to Bill, right, as far as qualifications go, that's, he, he was the bill for.
He is, he, he could run the whole plan right now, if something happened to Bill, he's well, like, running the plan.
He did, and I have still there, so, he is.
And he's got the same everything as Bill.
He, he does, and he's also willing to take out this additional role of stormwater asset management. And, uh, creating a whole MS four stormwater program, which the state is not requiring municipalities to do, but has not funded. So, for him to be willing to take on all this new responsibility, for, you know, a, a pay raise, yes, but not, like, a huge massive pay raise, is really wonderful for us as well. So, that's, so again, not proposing a whole FTE, um, but a pay increase to retain a very well-qualified employee, who's also willing to take on additional roles and responsibilities.
So, Steve, maybe that's something I wanna go pay for.
Exactly.
So, how, we got the housing director position?
That's a, that's a fully new position that wasn't in previous budget.
You've got a, what we would expect to be net neutral position, and the, the person administering the inspections, right?
Mm-hmm.
We've got cemetery add staff. What are the next?
Who's been giving, giving?
The range of pay raises over there, when you're interested in pay raises.
Pay increases to Derek and to, um, uh, Clay.
So, three FTEs and pay increases.
And beyond that, we.
Harvey.
No.
Harvey would be for any increase, but we.
A little increase for Harvey as well, correct? Those are all contemplated in this budget.
There, it's, based on this budget, there's not another FTE in that department.
No, not at this time, that will be.
That's what I'm trying to, how many new people are we adding, is what I'm trying to figure out.
One at cemetery and one at housing director, that, and that was the only actual new people, so two hundred people.
Well, aim, yeah, okay, so, okay. And then the housing director, why isn't that reporting up to Tim, I'm just curious?
Um, I spoke with Tim.
And on inspection, so.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's something he said he's open to, he, I spoke with him and asked him, you know, do you have a preference if the, if the individual reports to me or reports to you? Um, we talked about the fact that some people, when they're reviewing positions, they view it as a, I'm trying to think of the best term, but a more substantive position with more clout, if they see they report directly to the city manager, rather than another, their indirect report.
I don't think that would make sense to have that amendment stay building with you and Rich, so that you're all on the same page on what we're doing.
Yeah, 'cause a lot of that will tie in, yes, it'll tie in very closely to what Rich is doing, so I see that role as very collaborative, in fact, I spoke to both Tim and Rich about the best way to structure this, and they felt like it impacts both their budgets equally, so that neither one was necessarily the, the sure winner as a direct report. So that perhaps it's better having a direct report to me and us collaborate as directors and city manager to make sure we're all on the same page.
So, I don't disagree on the collaboration standpoint, but I thought the purpose of moving Harvey into chief and Tim expanding his role is so he could have a greater focus on coordinating citizen signage and things like that.
He is.
So, it just seems very odd that that position doesn't report to him.
It easily could, that's something that could be part of that.
So, can you, so can you explain, what, what is Tim going to do?
Yes, Tim's.
Well, that's my main reason.
Yeah, Tim's position is going to be overseeing the fire department, likely administering, as we're discussing, this very substantive change, if we roll it into more of a authority. Um, where it's gonna be, you know, perhaps the three Bs, I've heard it referred to as before, it's gonna take a lot of legwork to make that transition and change. He's also gonna spend a lot of time going through all of our public safety related ordinances that relate to traffic, um, health, police, fire. Make all those recommended changes, which would be really expensive to have an attorney do, and from past experience, when we had the attorneys do it. It's, it's not that they don't know what they're doing from a legal standpoint, but they don't know what they're doing for our, for our community, absolutely. So, we felt like it would be much cheaper to have him make those changes, and he shared that, in the relative near future, he, he's considering retirement, wants to get these things done before he goes. And allowing time to train Harvey, which is why we're talking about this transition.
Can I ask?
Yes.
So, you're creating a position for Tim, plus another position for code enforcement?
Well, actually, Tim's position was already created, I mean, Tim is already serving as, as safety director, public safety director, I mean, we, we just.
Well, JT was, JT was serving as safety director.
That's, that's, I mean, we made, we made Tim director of public safety.
Well, I know.
So, that position's really already created.
That position's.
But you're only paying him fourteen thousand dollars a year right now.
No.
For that position, right?
A lot more than fourteen grand a year.
Huh?
Tim makes a lot more than fourteen grand a year.
No, I'm, for the safety position, it's fourteen thousand dollars.
I think, I don't think here, we're talking the same.
That's what they were given, JT.
This, this is.
JT's, that's not, that's not.
JT was.
That's not what I'm, I'm not bringing up JT for that fact.
No, no, but.
That's what his position was, and that's what he got paid for.
No, there's two different roles, Dan, uh, DPW manager is what JT was, Tim is over public safety, it didn't exist.
We're not really, we're not really sure what JT was, but it really is, but it really is a young man, I mean, it's changed a lot since JT and Bill were there.
But I'm talking about apples and apples here.
I don't think you are, that's what I'm confused.
You're talking over, of what Tim was making, is that what you're saying?
Right.
You have, you have base salary, extra dollars.
So, so, between.
I've got a base salary of seventy thousand dollars from JT, and you gave him an extra fourteen thousand dollars to give him the title. So now, you have a chief of police that's getting X number of dollars, and I mean, it's not secret, it's public knowledge.
Yeah.
You're giving him X number of dollars, and you're giving him X number of dollars for the second name that you're giving.
That's, that's not accurate, none of that was done for Tim Gannus when he was three.
Right, I think.
That was a different scenario by previous administration that did not, was not a factor in this at all, was not a thing that we chose to copy, because it wasn't something we liked.
One pay.
Right, I think his pay just went.
One pay.
Just continued on.
I mean, it's, it's, they have ten different roles.
But you give him more money to take both, wear both hats, than what he would've got as chief of police.
We, we are not giving him fourteen thousand dollars like that.
No, but you give him more money than you would've given as chief of police to wear both titles.
That's a fair statement, I would say.
Correct?
That's a fair statement.
I mean, that was my whole point to begin with, it's irrelevant who had it or how you did it, it's irrelevant. So, we give him more money.
But what's your question, right?
Well, you're giving, you're giving him more money for two titles.
For two titles.
Than what he would, if he was just chief of police.
Yeah, sure.
You're giving him more money to wear, wear that other hat.
Sure.
And then, what are you gonna pay him when he wears just one hat? You know, is he gonna be willing to work for forty thousand dollars to wear one hat, or you're gonna have to pay him seventy-five thousand dollars or eighty thousand dollars, 'cause that's what he's used to? That's my point.
I, I'm not recommending, nor would I recommend a pay decrease to Tim Gannus.
Oh, 'cause he's still ultimately responsible for the police.
He's, he's still the same title as before, yes.
He's still the top authority of police, and he's still the top authority of the fire department. He's just had somebody else taking over some of that duty, and succession planning is happening because of.
He'll be training the next chief.
It's as if you're moving somebody from director to vice president, and they still have ultimate control.
Right.
Yeah, the only, the only problem I see with that is we're back at the same position we were with, and not to bring up that thing, but with Bill Marks. You know, he was the police chief, and he was also the city manager, so. To Dan's point, you know, I, I think we have to clarify that, excuse me, that whole position, so Harvey doesn't have to, Harvey is our new police chief.
Right, you're, you're saying that is a story.
Yes. Bam. And, but we're gonna have to keep, my opinion, you're gonna have to keep Tim in the same ballpark
Mm-hmm.
as, as he is with police chief, in order for him to do this, you know, uh, the authority work.
The police chief still reports to him, correct?
That's absolutely correct, we would have both the fire chief and the police chief reporting to the director of public safety.
Police chief, yeah.
Correct, okay.
But, but, at, in the public safety role, then, yeah, he wouldn't be, well, he would be overseeing the police department, but we aren't gonna go around calling him a chief, you know, like, we did with that guy, and then, you know, with Bill Marks, he used to sit there.
No, he'll no longer be.
Because that was a big bone of contention, and I think we all know that.
Yeah.
You know, how can a police chief be the city manager, where's all of that dumb different stuff?
Would that, would that make Tim a civilian, I mean, would he be, or would he still be part of?
No, he'd still be a, he'd still be an officer, yeah, he'd still be.
He's still, yeah.
So, he'd still be.
Because of that. It's, it's the same thing, it's the exact same thing, thank you, it's the exact same thing, you're paying two people. Tim Gannus was the chief of police, even though Bill Marks sat down there, but he answered, you know, he wasn't getting, he wasn't getting recognized as chief of police. And you had this oversight, and if you don't need a safety director that's head of the fire department and a head of the police department, you only got forty-five hundred people in this town for crying out loud. You know, we're getting carried away with administration costs, and I hate to say it, how close are we to bankruptcy? Truly, truly, no, truly, we're not, truly, forty-three million dollars for school, forty million dollars for Detroit, thirty million dollars for, for projects.
Very far out, but, very far out.
We're not.
Could I ask, we, we would have a public health. I, I've been here, I'm like, I'm exhausted, I'm gonna get through this.
Let's, we're gonna try to get started.
I gotta leave it now, I, I got that for that.
And, and just to reiterate, Heather's been here a while, like, redoing this.
All right, go on, sorry.
No, that's all right, so, um, to just, to summarize, that is the transition that's recommended for public safety, is to allow Tim to be the direct report, no longer the chief, to direct report from the fire department and police department. Um, acting chief would be housed in Harvey if approved on Monday. Um, eventually, if no other applicants come forward, effective July one, there would be another vote to name him chief, so the commission will decide, and that's how that would progress. Uh, no additional FTE at this time, however, one is being worked towards through the COPS grant, and a budget amendment will be brought forward at that time. Um, we're confident that we have a good chance of securing that, but I don't wanna stick it in the budget and have the budget skew, just 'cause we don't know for sure.
So, we've already applied for that cap, right?
It's not, it has not been submitted yet, but we're already working on it in school.
Correct.
Yeah, absolutely, so the two full-time equivalents that would be additional, would be, um, one at the lower pay scale at cemetery to replace Clay, who would be moving over to be the public services lead and manage the street department under the director of public safety. And then, um, and Nick Bailey would be jumping up to become the Sexton.
Explain what Clay's going to do then, what is Mike going to be doing?
He's the director of public safety, and he's gonna oversee water, sewer, and streets, and we don't, we, so we currently have a water lead and a waste water lead, but we don't have a streets lead. So, basically, Clay's gonna be the streets lead, so that each apartment has a lead, and he's the director of all three departments, so, yeah.
So.
'Cause that, that lead position is contemplated for the union, um, and we just haven't had it filled in a while, we didn't have the right person for it.
When I saw you interviewing, did we hire any person, we didn't hire any?
We've, we've hired some part timers, but not anyone full timer.
But we're kinda adding another body to DPW.
Es- essentially, yeah, to fill that gap with that shuffling.
Well, it would be. But Clay is on top of the person that there's a position open for now, because I see we're looking.
That, that one's posted, so we can start getting applicants in case it gets approved, then we can hire someone, have it start right away if it's approved. We want to get the applicant pool available, 'cause it takes so long.
What's changing in Clay's role, though?
He's no longer gonna oversee the cemetery, instead, he's gonna oversee the streets department.
But he, I actually like that, I need a personal, I wonder. I mean, he's already heavily involved in the streets, right?
He has been, we've been testing him out, like, test driving in the streets, we, we've tested, we've tested him into a degree about three employees to see who would be best suited, um, and, and after test driving a few, Mike and I are very satisfied that Clay's the right person for the role, he's open to it.
I don't have many questions as to qualification, just the fact that we're adding another body to DPW's, I think it's gonna, people couldn't even notice that, any question? Anyways.
So, it's one that historically, um, right before he started, was there, and has been an open position this whole time, but wasn't there.
So, you're adding an FTE.
Compared to previous budget last year. So, the budget prior to that, it was there, all the last fiscal was not there.
So, this, this is an isolated position, it's all.
It's, it's putting one back that was historically there two years ago.
But Clay's position wasn't there.
The, it's, it's been contemplated, it just wasn't filled, they had the number of bodies, that's gonna be the same as this year, but they didn't have that lead streets person, they unofficially did, and Mike, Mike was essentially that person. But was never formally recognized as such, just entitled.
I mean, to me, it makes sense to have somebody in charge of water, somebody in charge of sewer, somebody in charge of streets. I, I just looked at, I thought that was what Mike did for us.
And actually, I think years, years ago, back years ago, they, this, the city used to be structured that way.
Didn't it?
Uh.
Yes.
It, it goes back, and Dan would probably remember, Dick Flinner's day, when Dick Flinner was in charge of streets, but he, uh, I'm trying to think who the, the head of the DPW was at that time, I can't remember. But, but, yeah, uh, it was structured that way, and then all of a sudden, it got I, I, I think with the Willie Brown, John Brown type situation, it got pushed back, and then we're, we are where we are today, without the street leading stuff. And I remember your licenses for water and sewer too, and I mean, you gotta be careful putting somebody in charge that doesn't know what they're doing when it comes to water and sewer.
But we have people who do know.
That's why, but he does have a good point because that's where my head goes with the lead of the DPW, right, you know? No, no offense to Mike, but he's, Bill Hausen and Scott, Mike probably doesn't know where to start with anything with their roles, right, in terms of.
Overseeing what they're doing.
Yes, like how do you know how to, how are you gonna hold that checks and balances, which I I understand, which is why I really leaned on Mike's knowledge on running. Being our streets lead in absence of having the full level of oversight necessary for those two departments.
From my perspective, as the one charged with making your operations run smoothly, I actually view it as a really great fit. Because Mike is a very strong working firm, which in a small community you really need.
Sure.
And the, um, ones that we have with the license shirt are really good at the administration and the recording. But when it comes time to jump into a hole, not that they can't do it or don't do it well.
Right.
But Mike, you know, in my opinion, does a better job of managing those sites.
Which is fair.
Yeah.
But so the lack of or less attention to oversight over here seemed to me like he could really own streets then. And we don't have to have the level of expensive street in streets by making a promotion to another individual paying them more and then backfilling up the property. Yeah, I wasn't quite sold on that either, for him to be director over water, sewer and streets and to look at his qualifications, once again, not, no disrespect, he's not filling in for Bill. He's not filling in for this other gentleman that is equal to Bill.
Well, he currently has that role, I mean, that's, so anything less, that would be a demotion.
Oh, no, absolutely, no, I'm not talking about the motion.
What would be the risk for Clay?
I go for his asset.
Um, I'm recommending a ten percent increase in pay. I'm I'm also recommending in my budget and it's covered, um, I'll show you the bottom net, um, because of inflation being seven percent to keep wages steady and keep retention. Um, seven percent across the board, wage increases as well.
I I can't get on that. Most private sectors not doing even dollar per dollar inflation increase, I mean, it's it's kind of.
On the high end, you're looking at three percent and that's.
I mean, I think, no, we did the landfill five percent when in the middle of all. Yeah, because of it going over, but you have the Fed increasing rates, it's gonna spike in some inflation here soon and we're gonna find a bounce back to seven percent. But that's a lot.
Yeah, no, and again, this is just a proposal, that's why it says it's been published, because I want your guys' feedback, so that was just the starting point to show what you guys, what we could afford and what you want.
Sure, I I think wage increase, gotta have wage increases, no way around that, it's in it, you should, you know, it's important to retain, uh, keep that dollar chunk. I just don't think it's a realistic time to.
To go that big.
Yeah, to go that big, we should reward them and they they deserve a wage increase, there's nothing.
Well, I think it's really important to keep people too, I mean, I think it's important to keep people.
I agree, but I think.
But I think seven is a.
If you go back to the Excel sheet that we got that I battled for a long time because the information was wrong. There there were up to ten percent raises on that one. And that was in the last year.
In some positions, that's the case, correct?
The step ups, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that was.
So we're not talking the union people, yeah, we're not talking the union people in the.
I I'm recommending across the board because as for the union contracts, if we do not include the union, they can come back and then challenge that, and they would challenge that. If you left the union folks out of a wage increase, you get to not.
I guess I just thought we negotiated their increases already.
We did prior to this budget where we're proposing new wage increases.
So we have to, so we have to renegotiate the union every year?
What you have to, no, what you have to do is if you propose wage increases across the board for everyone except non-union, then you have to also provide it to union or they will challenge it and successfully challenge it.
So.
Cause otherwise you're penalizing them for their union membership.
Okay, so are we not doing? Performance based increases on an individual level then?
Not at this time, I'm proposing across the board for retention purposes.
Okay, so I would then, if we did a performance based wage increase based on the individuals in their position, are we in a position with the union where? They have their standard step up and we're not in violation?
It it gets dicey, it depends.
It's a, I mean, that is one thing I've been battling forever is dealing with, because I have the union employees and it, you can't. It's very difficult to give raises on the fact of their, um, the way they're performing, I mean, it makes it, you'll get, you'll get sued every time.
We will, we'll spend more, we'll spend more in legal fees to funding that than we would just.
I'm I'm talking like the people are not part of the, like, the unions are already getting the wage increases.
No, they already got it, that's the difference.
Yeah, they did.
Yeah, that's the difference though.
But they're gonna get one this year because of what was negotiated, so what about the other people that aren't protected by those unions? And how is they able to get a wage increase?
So there's no, there's no step up this year.
So, but I see what Patrick's saying, is there a way to say, we're not gonna do across the board raises, you're just going to evaluate the people that work in this building and you may give them raises if you feel like they're doing a good job. And that would avoid saying that we're giving.
I don't, I don't approve of the.
Again, again, the potential.
Or would that be too fishy to, you know what I'm, I mean, we're looking for a way around.
If if they observe a pattern where they're seeing that, they're saying that we're giving it to non-union, they're gonna challenge it.
Do our director level positions give performance evaluations on employees?
They do.
I I, you hear the turn, I would like to, I would expect them to handle if we're documenting performance and giving wages based on merit increase. And not just a blanket wage increase.
Do you know, do you know what that dollar amount is if you were to give that, the the raise that you're proposing across the board to ever, do you know what that dollar amount would be or not?
What's our payroll expense? Well, it's broken down.
Yeah, we don't have a stamp right at the overall.
I do know that, I do.
But you get it's categorized into its own ledger also, I don't know. Don't you wanna sit down and write it, Chief?
It's very difficult to do that, because they talk about their wages.
Uh, no legal review, you know, I I looked it up when I was.
He's part of the.
Nothing legally we can stop him from doing.
Free market's gonna dictate what people are gonna make unless you have a union, so. There's no way around that.
I mean, you gotta be really small to do that. Union or non-union?
Well, actually, it's a bit into that, I'm still struggling with that housing role now, or if it makes sense this year.
Well, but I think as long as you're okay with the dollar amount, we can still argue about who that person's gonna report to.
I'm thinking like if we're shifting Tim's responsibilities, I'm I'm s- I know that we're gonna get our best dollar, but Tim, because we're so much expected, but if we're shifting so much responsibility away from him. Is that an expense for this fiscal year or while he builds up the program, for next, next fiscal year, I think, I am all for the addition of inspection individuals.
Has Tim given like a, a, what does he think he would retire, like in the next two years or?
That's the impression I got, he never gave me an exact date, probably won't until he.
I just kind of, I would imagine that with him, it's kind of an ebb and flow, as this progresses, he may spend more time, maybe think, you know, about your time.
His his position is a unique position too, I mean, you know, being with the sheriff's department, giving his time in here and, you know, so.
I'm I'm. When we shift a lot of responsibility on to Harvey, because he'll be the new chief. I I need to understand better what Tim's gonna be taking on, so we can use him the most effective way possible. And does that housing role, and the answer might be yes, does that housing role, is that an expense we can take on this fiscal year, next fiscal year? Midway through this fiscal year while he builds it up, so it's a like a partial year expense for us.
I like your thought on that one, because he's intended to have some time to put together some processes that don't dictate another, two people building the program is not necessary.
Baby baby steps in.
Yeah.
That's something I'd have to talk to Tim about, we had not discussed, um, or envisioned him building that program, that's not something he has any specialty in.
But it, these oversight on all ordinance and that role heavily, I mean, it might be, we take a a pause on the missed, uh, or is it missed a component of that role? And focus in the early stages on establishing a stronger ordinance and inspection program, get that up and going. And then at maybe midpoint through the year, um, expenses, you know, thirty thousand, maybe increase the rate to sixty.
Buckets.
Get a qualified individual. And then we phase that role into it's only a partial expense this year maybe, but then Tim can, because the the meat and potatoes of that role and the most important piece of that role to me. Is establishing a strong ordinance enforcement group and getting that.
I I agree and that's why from my perspective, operationally, it's better to have a person who specializes in that doing that rather than Tim, whose specialty is purely from police standpoint. And has never been housing or code enforcement, he shared with me that one of the reasons that the code enforcement isn't done is is the biggest one's lack of capacity, but the other is they don't have any specialty or training, police does not focus on that when they train. I think as someone who teaches law enforcement courses to cadets, they don't focus on that at all.
So with the, to include this new guy and then we need to, a person, I should say, uh, that we could sit down, Tim could sit down. And get a big, better understanding because this this person would come in being knowledgeable on code enforcement and then we can start rewriting and doing whatever. Uh, as far as, you know. The the other part of the public safety, you know, and I think he's got a pretty good handle on that with with Mike Adams and and, you know, the the way that's working out, so.
That actually allows him to shift his focus though, I mean, he did an excellent job with parking and fire ordinance, I thought, I I didn't. I didn't see a shortfall in ability there and.
Yeah, the parking he drafted, the fire Mike drafted.
And then he he uses resources internally, he's got off, you know, he's gonna have somebody that's that's an container individual, it sounds like would be most likely visual for the inspection role that he's gonna be able to lean on. It's kind of like the whole Mike Baker situation again, where he doesn't have every tool to oversee every area, you know, at the highest level, but. You know, he can get there, I mean, you have faith in that, in in terms of shaving numbers and FTEs are always like the hardest, or they're the spot to go after if you're gonna cut budgets, right?
Yeah, this position though, I've already programmed it to be budget, uh, budget neutral in this budget.
So I can see how the individual that's doing inspections, when we talked earlier in the year, how are we gonna make up the rest of that, I mean, do we have that?
There's nothing, but under the way I've budgeted, there's nothing to make up, it's already budget neutral.
So then could he purchase a surplus or is it not there and we have an inspection person, and, because I would rather move resources into hiring another officer myself for that position. I think they've. I I would like to step into it, but I just don't think. Right way, I I wanna focus on the ordinance piece more, because I wanna get some light and, you know, deal with that, so.
I agree and again, I'm not trying to underplay Tim's abilities, I just think from my conversations with him, he wouldn't be, he would, he would have to take a lot of time learning that before he could effectively do that.
Do they, do they have confidence they have that potential to do that? Wouldn't have to carry the whole.
Thank you.
What do you mean?
Is that what they're still yours?
Yeah. Well, I didn't mean to.
No, no.
But that was my thought, I mean, originally, if he doesn't have the skill set and there's a company out there to be contracted work with for even the same dollar amount.
Yeah, potentially, whether they, I don't know, I'm not certain of that, I don't know what the cost would be.
Cause I think to your point, I think that it's a valid position, but I think that we're not even ready and I don't know that we're gonna find an individual, I think, that can, that can solve a company could potentially do cover us. For that role until said time, that we feel that there's somebody out there, I don't know, but I mean, just this word. For, you had said that.
Don't be right, you were.
No, I think you had Tim on that, that was, because he would, that was your intention, right, mentioning Tim about the ordinances and having focus on that.
I I mean, in in terms of shifting his job role, I think it's heavily ordinance focused, I mean, I guess if you're taking away responsibilities of the chief of police.
And if your contention was that he wouldn't have enough experience in rental inspection.
I I just think code enforcement in general, when it's directed at housing, which this would be, is not his area of expertise in any way.
I just think the public would highly question what we do with our assistant, or director of public safety, if he's not a chief of police or the fire chief.
From my perspective, he he'd be training the chief of police that time and still serving as an officer. While also administering the change to a potential shift of the fire department to authority and also going through all of our ordinances, which is no small lift, that are police ordinances, traffic ordinances and all that.
Which I think, I, so, the fact, the fact that we're doing that placemakers thing right now, where we're, um, potentially updating our ordinances and and finding ways. And potentially to make more revenue, I I think it would be helpful to have Tim to be able to work with them. Cause one, I mean, one of the conversations yesterday with with the woman that was here for placemakers, um, I mean, she can tell you about ordinances and blah blah blah, but what she doesn't know is our community and I think Tim would be. Really helpful in that aspect is saying that that's not gonna fly in this community or that it is gonna fly or, so I think having. Tim in that position would be helpful in that sense, but I mean, that's just my take on that and what we have going on right now.
And if you look at just the ordinances themselves, what's the timeframe on that?
The the new placemaker thing or?
No, no, the ordinances as far as, uh.
Do you have all the.
Tim's going to do, how long does that gotta take?
No idea.
I'm tired of writing open checks to companies and stuff to just do a job and we have no idea how long it's going to take.
That that's a fair statement.
Well, then, and I, and I mean, when I do.
I don't know how I could accurately come up with that though.
An estimate.
True.
I, I think it's more of a, we need to accomplish this many ordinance reviews by this time expectation versus an all inclusive, is that a fair statement? Like, Tim, we wanna accomplish these specific ordinances, like the parking fire that we did this year, we wanna accomplish these ones by this date, kind of thing?
I I feel like that'd be very arbitrary, because each ordinance, some are very short, some are very long, I think that's a very arbitrary and inaccurate.
And when I hear about us hiring another company to do contract work, I'd rather see somebody we know, knows us, who who were paying to do a bunch of that, I mean, everybody's wearing a bunch of hats anyway. I'd rather see us pay someone we know, we trust.
I can say the, we, the third party contractors that we've utilized since I've been here, I'm wondering if satisfied with across the board and anyways, they they don't care about the Canada, we do, the way we do.
So Sean, are you saying, do you do believe Tim has the ability to take on the ordinance role or not?
I think, I think, I think he, I think he does have the ability and I think. He he will get the help he needs from the people in this building as well, I I mean, I think, I think having Rich and Heather and Ashley and Cal, I I mean, I. I do, I think that would be, and I think it would be more more beneficial for the city to have someone who's familiar with our community than an outsider who's just gonna come in and say, well, this is what you should do with this and it did may not fly.
That's getting a little bit.
Yeah, no, right.
That's what.
Generally, they just take a form that's generally applicable to most communities and say, here you go.
Right.
And Harvey's been around a long time, I, well, I don't think the, I don't think the learning curve is gonna be drastic for Harvey, I'm sure there's some things that are different, but I don't think. I have a lot of confidence in Harvey's ability to pick up the role quickly and so there's not gonna be a ton of handle.
He assumed, he assumed the role partially some time back, if you remember, you know, Har- Harvey was. As interim acting chief for a while, so, yeah, so, I mean, yeah, as far as picking up that role.
There's not a learning curve there.
No.
I mean, I have a lot of confidence in both of those two.
And I think with. Tim's ability to be able to talk to the different entities in town, that that might go to be a situation, so, that that's my thing.
I know we we cut you off early on there to start talking about bodies, Heather, we're sorry, I mean, some red flags.
That's, that's fine, that's an important factor, um, I mean, I guess since I'm at the bottom, I'll just drill quickly through the figures. So the net of revenue we've spent this year, as I have the budget currently presented, which is not taking into account any of the changes we've just discussed now. Um, is a net revenue for the city of a little under a million dollars, eight hundred and forty eight thousand, seventy dollars.
That's what goes back to the general fund for miscellaneous expenditure at that point?
Correct, that would be considered carryover if this budget were, um, to effectuate exactly the way we budgeted, which is never the case, but if it did. That's the amount that's anticipated and projected under this budget to be carryover at the end of the fiscal year. Basically become unassigned fund balance for for other fiscal years, should you need it for projects, so this amount could be utilized, um, when we're talking about. Cause I don't have it programmed in here, because I'm waiting for the calculations that are final from your tilling, but to that point, the eight hundred and forty eight thousand could be revenue that's, um, allocated towards the DPW building.
That's similar amount to what we unassigned last year, right, or close to it, I thought it was in the eight hundreds now.
Yeah, yeah.
For not having the searchers, does this budget reflect the anticipated bond expenditure? from not having the searchers, does this budget reflect the anticipated bond expenditures that we discussed last week?
It does not. That's that's what I'm saying, is out of this eight hundred and forty-eight, if the bond expenditures would come out of there. Um, so we're gonna be looking at roughly, any, depending on the term and the percentage, um, that we get, anywhere from about two hundred to three hundred thousand would come out of that eight hundred and forty-eight thousand. So we're still looking at roughly half a million dollars of excess.
And for the amended budget that we just approved, how much of that excess did we end up spending last year? Or did we have carryover?
We we have some carryover.
How much carryover?
I don't recall the top of my head.
I don't wanna get too dense, but the point there.
Last, I saw, um, we were at sixty-six percent unassigned fund balance. Um, the amount recommended by, uh, Michigan Government Financial Officers Association is they want you to be manually at about twenty-five to thirty percent, so we're more than double that. So we are in a fiscally healthy position. Um, as a small community, because in my mind, we bear risk less readily than a larger community, because they're both smaller. I think we should be above, what's recommended by MGF, because that's a more general. I personally think small to mid-sized communities should be at fifty percent, but again, we're about sixty percent over that, or we were.
I love that mindset, um. Did, I know we talked about a while back, I don't know if it ever ended up shaking out differently, but I imagine with inflation and what is that? It it probably led to where you ended up, what, did the pension adjust, do we have to make pension adjustment?
They have not given us the, um, updated actuarial figures from ours, what that will be.
So we're not, we're not fucking.
And part of that, no, and the other side to that coin is it actually might end up being a substantial reduction, which is, um, strange thinking of it that way, not from hers, but from the Michigan Legislature, because they have just passed, and they haven't yet given us the breakdown of what it means for each municipality, but the Michigan Legislature just passed legislation that is pension, um, relief for smaller municipalities. So we don't know what that looks like exactly. They have to run it through Treasury at the department level, Michigan Department of Treasury, give us calculations, but we anticipate, because they really were programming that to help communities that were severely underfunded, and we're not. So there's a chance we could get to fully funded, like, just not have an issue with that. Really leaving payments, yeah.
You know, we're still waiting on figures to come back on the teardown cleanup of the feed mill site, but is that living in one of the sub-budgets now, or would that be coming out?
That would be a budget amendment.
That would be a budget amendment, and I think we're, I think the original number on that was a quarter million-ish.
Yes, so I anticipate that the, so if we were to contemplate, say, a three hundred thousand dollar bond payment out of that eight forty-eight, we're looking at, um, still a little over half a million. Uh, I think we would very readily absorb the costs of that demolition out of that half a million and still have probably quarter million easily of carryover.
And are we anticipating, no, we are at victory part. Are we anticipating park enhancements in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three?
Yes, yeah, we. I do have those, those.
I'd like to accomplish another part in the next.
So under contractual, right now, I have a hundred and forty-five thousand budget expenditures for parks.
And that's, and that's being paid through our sorry, I'm reading the bar budget there, so. Bar has a fund balance, I think.
They they do, yeah.
What's their, I probably don't have.
I I don't have that in my head. Most of the stuff the treasurer would get from me, and just.
This is just on incoming revenues and how.
Correct. This is, this is just purely based on money's coming in this year. None of this is contemplating spending out of carryover.
Yeah, okay.
But funds, to to your point, funds in our, um, one-on-one that are housed there, but are quote-unquote committed for a resource like, um, ours funds are, we spend it out of that, so the committed level goes down, which raises correspondingly our unassigned fund balance.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Followed, yeah.
Yep.
Is there anything in the budget that that you were, that you felt? I don't wanna say uncomfortable, but was there anything in there that like went to air and you might stand up for, did you order?
No, um, I was actually very happy with where we came out. I was really, really happy with where we were before, when we projected that we could use that full mileage base on our expanded tax base before we heavily rolled it back. So it's not like heavily put us in a bad position. It just wasn't as amazing, and I was thrilled about.
It's not, I mean, it was, it was. It was difficult because it ruined, like, you know, the work that you're already done, but it's, I have to say, it's great news.
It's, 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 I mean, it's an amazing thing. If I wasn't so exhausted right now, I'd be jumping up and down and excited, so.
So what's the message to taxpayers on how much they should look forward to and anticipate?
So I can get, I can get a calculation to show, let me pull up. So basically, you take the sixteen point nine nine.
I had a lot going yesterday.
And you divide it by a thousand, so you take the sixteen point nine seven nine three and divide it by a thousand, and then times it by your taxable value, and that will tell you what your, um.
Per one thousand, right?
You said, maybe you take the, what, sixteen point?
It's sixteen point nine seven nine three, divide it by a thousand, and then times it by the taxable value of your property will tell you what your tax bill will be in total.
So one point seven percent. We carry a decimal over, so like thirty-one dollars. Hey, tax relief is tax relief.
No, I, that's, yeah, I mean, I.
That'll make up for the ones that their water bills are gonna increase by.
Right, as I say, that's.
Monthly. This is a good thing. It's a good thing.
Yeah, question.
I I'm assuming that's what it was, it was just a decimal adjustment.
Yeah, I think so.
Actually, you wanna go get my fake.
No, you're fine. You don't have to.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I apologize.
You're fine. We don't have to do that.
That's the maximum allowable mileage on properties now, is that what that is?
Eighteen percent, or eighteen mil is the max. We were at seventeen point seven.
Actually, twenties are max.
Twenty.
Originally, it was the heavily rolled it back, so for our charter, twenties are max. Headly over time had rolled it back, most recently had rolled it back to the seventeen point six nine or nine six. And, um, now we do calculations down to sixteen point nine seven nine three, so we're under seventeen.
I thought eighteen was, that's cool. I mean, it's, it's one of those.
It's a great effect, in fact.
Uh, this next period moving forward, the next tax bills.
Would the July show be reflecting that adjustment?
Um.
Tax bills should have.
What's that?
Summer tax bills should have it on it, right? Or is it the next one, the winter?
We already prepared summer taxes, so it'll be the next one.
Yeah, it'll be the next one.
The winter, yeah. So I think it's important.
Yeah.
To be cautious on how we message it. I don't, I know they're getting a tax decrease, and we should be proud of that, but I don't wanna expect
I would say not.
Hundreds and hundreds of dollars in savings.
I think, I mean, I I think it's, I think it's something we should all be hanging our hats on. I it shows that, it validates the work that we've been doing and the decisions we've been making. I I think it, I really do. I mean, I think it's awesome news that our city is going in the right direction.
I agree. I just, it's a temporary expectation.
Yeah, no, I mean, your tax bills aren't gonna be.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's impossible.
But it establishes that what we've been standing for, the naysayers, etc., we're not.
Especially in a time of really unprecedented inflation.
Crazy inflation.
And we're still waiting some progress to be made.
Maybe the message is more of those.
So what, can I ask a question?
Things that first that got you to, you know, we we increase quality of life, quality of services in this amount of time. Well, it's not a drastic decrease, you know, we need to be really proud of, and now this is where you're beginning, etc., etc.
Yeah, if we message it as at a time when prices are increasing everywhere, we were able to lower your tax bill. That, I mean, that right there, I think is powerful.
I agree. It's huge. You really can.
No matter how much it is, it's still, it's still a decrease.
Yeah, a decrease, it's it's just, it's prosperous, right?
It's, we we all do a heavy gas, they did have a gasoline, so.
Yeah.
As a metric for the health of the community, it's, it's great to see that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So do you have any question?
Well, I'm just, you guys are getting, this happened because of the growth of the community, right? Is that what it is? That's basically what happened?
Yes.
So, I mean, Sean, I'd just be really careful. I'd be really careful, because it's, we're we're maxed out at our we're maxed out at our, you know, a a number, we're at the top of the line as far as our tax. I mean, we're one in, one minus point away from max that we can charge taxpayers. You know, and it just so happened that it got reduced because real estate prices jumped, and real estate income come in because of the market. And because you have things that are drawn city, things, you know, I don't wanna say particularly marijuana. The point I'm trying to make is, this isn't really something that has been done collaboratively by City Hall. This is, this is natural growth because marijuana came into town, and you're gonna have to raise that tax. You're gonna have to go to eighteen to pay for everything else that you're trying to do.
Is there a question in there somewhere?
Well, I'm really trying to make a point, Sean.
No, I mean, I gave you one. I I mean, I disagree with you, but I I gave you one.
Here, here's a question. What if there's a burst in the housing market?
Again, or it bottoms out?
Yeah.
In that situation like that, that's really gonna lean on Mindy and how much she decreases the assessments of the community. I don't think you'd see a massive, I mean, there is a potential for a decrease, but I don't think it's, property values aren't gonna bottom out like that, and then the repercussions of how long it's going to take to hit the tax roll before that gets recognized. And it's like drive three to five a year, is that fair?
It it is, and I would also say that there's a corresponding, um, weight to that, because proposal A limits the capped value, and when the housing market goes down, like right now, no one can afford to buy a Buchanan. If it lowers, there's gonna be more turnover, and so those property caps caps are gonna come off, so our revenue will actually increase to a degree because of that, so it's, I think it'll mostly balance out.
In addition, I don't think we're in the same position, and you would know this from a mortgage perspective, that we were in two thousand and eight. That's one thing that keep, people keep bringing up, is that, well, we're gonna bottom out again. Well, not the same way, because I don't think they have these fractured mortgages that they had in oh eight. I think they're a lot more stable.
Regulations are a lot.
They really smarter than they were back then.
I did, and that's true. That's a good point. If values drop by fifty thousand, just because values go down, people go around with homes, but then people who couldn't afford, now can afford, and we.
Right, and I think there's something along the way, that we get wanting to be here, or that was something we talked about yesterday, too, is the fact that we don't have enough homes for people who wanna live here.
I think the north side has potential. I know this is.
Go, go back to what we were saying.
Well, that that was.
It's a long, it's a long play. So we should be having those discussions each year, if we're seeing that coming up, to address for it. But it it won't be one of those things where it just is a shock to budget right away. And it'll slowly, we'll slowly see it start dissipating.
I also think there won't be an insubstantial increase to our tax base that comes this next fiscal year through the sale of city-owned properties, that we're we're now primed to do and will accomplish this fiscal year. I think that's gonna be a fairly substantive change to our tax base.
That's a great segue, I feel like, to what is our plan on selling property?
Yes, so I have, I put a number.
Sorry, do you have one there?
No, I, well, I was just gonna say, uh, that Mrs. Henderson, yesterday, you alluded to this, you know, and and, uh, the the housing here in town, you know, because you 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 got two different levels, the twenty-five thousand and four hundred thousand. You know, and what we talked about yesterday was getting to that middle ground. And that middle ground is what's gonna save the city, you know. And actually, the 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 north end is is one of those potential, admire, in one of those potential areas where we can do that.
We do have, that's one of the few areas we have potential growth in from housing, or something.
Yeah.
We really do, and I know that people dismiss that, and I don't like they dismiss, not anybody here, but in general, like, drive around there, there, it's not potential because of of any particular one reason, it's just there is potential there, that if it starts, and I've seen the Niles, it it's like a wave.
Well, yeah, the hard part with that is, right?
Yeah, what the street is.
We talked about this together, you know, it's the perception of gentrification, it's a real thing. But I, today, I can't tell you any real public policy that can mitigate that effectively.
And we, let's get back to the.
Yeah, we're gonna go on a tangent.
Yeah, let's say. You're gonna be leaving, so.
Yeah, I'm leaving, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get to the side.
So I do have a figure in, so I find it real quickly. I I actually feel like this is a fairly conservative number based on our possibilities that are mostly confidential at this point. Um, but I've placed a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar revenue. And. And I, to some degree, purposely left off, um, the budget for the teardowns that we're contemplating, because some of the opportunities with the county, um, I don't know if I shared with you guys, very recently, the county chair, they're going to reinvigorate their teardown assistance program, which they got rid of last year. Um, and also, um, it sounds like there's potential grant money that's gonna be made available for that. We we need to show a financial hardship that we can't afford it in our budget, that we haven't already budgeted for it, so I'm starting playing.
So, let's just say, so, that is an interesting question. So that number's predicated on moving real quick. But if that doesn't happen right away, that eats up a lot of that.
It it does, so I, I'm about a hundred and some thousand over that in expenditures. So if that number were zeroed out, we're still gonna be putting, um, about a hundred grand into carryover based on the projected budget. So that's to zero.
That scares me now, I mean, I'm kind of, only from the timing, for a second.
Yeah.
Especially with those bond payments that are.
Well, but there's, so to argue, to argue the other side, I know, what's not, also is not here, I would assume, is, um, the potential of receiving a whole bunch of grants that.
We have, we have probably, between Rich and I, we're anticipating about one and a half million dollars of potential grants that are not contemplated in this budget, because.
So I think that kinda evens out the fact you have that seven fifty in there, and you put that, I mean, I would personally, I don't.
Unless you have that cushion and carryover, then that's.
I mean, there's some questionables there. The bottom line is, you still end up with a positive at the bottom, even if that seven fifty doesn't happen. I mean, I don't go to the bank with hoping for a grant, but that's kinda.
Good.
That's why I did program grant money.
I like that you don't have the minutes in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I think that's one of the pads.
Yes, it it did. It made it way too.
Inflating, but.
Yeah.
That inflated way.
I am, I am.
So I can take that number out and zero it out, if that makes you guys more comfortable, but.
I would rather lower that substantially.
Okay.
Only because of timing.
Yeah, what do you think?
Because they're gonna renovate that entire building over there, so.
Well, let's.
That's gonna take a long time. Yeah, it's expensive.
But I was also contemplating that minimally, we had identified last year over ten, so you know, properties that are marketable and ready with no prep. Oh, in addition to the, uh, which would need the tear down, the property out at the feed mill. So I thought between those ten properties and the feed mill, I would contemplate the other confidential opportunities. I felt like it's probably easy to get to that number.
That's a solid number. You go confidential based on assessed value and those combined.
I felt. I did. I did.
Okay.
So was it, was there anything else in there that need you, like, feeling leery of putting that?
No, I I really kept a lot of the, I really think we're gonna come out of this fiscal year substantially ahead of what I'm projecting, but I wanted to be very conservative and not put those, even though I feel pretty good about getting those grants. I do want that.
Well, I know, and and speaking of Rich, I know he feels really good about some of his grants, too. So, I mean, I would be anticipating giving us some.
That's money in, money out, right? Is there expenditure in there that is gonna get absorbed by the grant that's?
Yes, but it's not one and one. It's, we're allowed to build in admin to a certain percentage, usually about twenty percent.
Sure.
So if we're getting about twenty percent, of, you know, like, one and a half to two million, that's not insubstantial, so.
There is one in there, though, that would help us from the previous discussion, I have to go backwards, but with, uh, speaking back to Tim, that is the MEDC, the Main Street grant from Sony Nord, and it's twenty-five green.
Oh, that's on Rich's list, right?
Yeah, so that would help, I'm just going back a little bit, playing into this whole budget discussion, that that would help offset some of our thoughts on where that position goes, what that additional body would look like. So at least for the first year, and then I think we would revisit that next year.
Yeah, and and again, this is with the seven percent raises in there. If you guys want me to dial that back, say, to five, that's that's gonna cause some substantial lowerings as well in the expenditure, and we'll make the, so again, even if this was, you know, had five, seven hundred and fifty out of it, we're we're probably.
To to vote informally, I would be ultimately knocking that number of seven down a little.
Yep, I do that.
I just don't think it's.
So you feel like five hundred?
Well, I think, I think five percent would be a little more doable, in my perspective, than than seven.
Okay, I think that's fair.
And if we can, and we can do that.
I mean, hopefully.
I'd I'd like more, or more research done on the cross support thing, because I I have a very hard time with, uh, pre-negotiated stuff, I was already done with the union, and then giving them money on top of that.
Yeah, I can ask Matt. Matt specializes in union contracts. From, from my knowledge of it, it would be tricky, but if Matt feels otherwise, I'm open to exploring.
I'm not saying ignore them. They're gonna get a raise that they deemed acceptable. Economic environment at that time was very similar to what it is now, so.
Yeah, I mean, I mean.
I know, I know. It just, that drives me.
I mean, I, it's been driving me crazy for twelve years.
It's, it's because every place on the sun has. It's, it's because every place on the sun has a hiring side and is offering as much or more than we are.
And we need to stay competitive, and that's important.
But to, to your guys' point, I can adjust it to be five, and rather than just giving across the board, I'll wait to get the opinion from Matt. If Matt gives me the go-ahead for performance-based only, then I won't give them out until performance space has been done and only allocate it based on the results of that.
Okay.
That way it's budgeted for, it's already covered, but we're only doing it if it's warranted and legal.
And legal.
That's important. I, I mean, I think, I think that's a legitimate ask, I mean, I don't think that's asking too much, right?
I, I don't, I think it's necessary for retention, I think much.
No, I, I'm not saying, I'm just saying, I, I're trying to work around all the process of work, you know.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I do agree, yeah.
All right, now we need to explore. I mean, a lot, we have a lot of new people that are impacted by that, that are brought in at a market rate scale already.
Who haven't been, who haven't been reviewed in a year, right, so I'd say his point, I think he's right, you know, it's time to see if they, do they really deserve updates.
Yes, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, no, I agree. Yeah, absolutely, if, if Matt doesn't see an issue with that, I, I like to do performance-based. You know, I, I can't say anything negative about unions, but it ties my hands to a degree that I don't think, I, I prefer.
It's important to see where he's standing, so, good and bad, and I agree.
You know, even some of my union employees, they argue the same thing, they say, why is that guy getting a fifty cent raise when I get a fifty cent raise when he doesn't do jack? And it's hard to argue with, I mean, and it's hard to retain people that way, too.
It is, unions are a double-edged sword, there's, there's many pros and cons, just like everything in life, there's good and bad, yeah.
Okay, is there any key, other key ones you wanna hit on? You got a half hour left to run through?
So yes, right, the biggest one of note is going to be in our, let me scroll over to it, water sewer. It was mentioned by Andy last time he was here, because it's important, I wanna make sure I know, um, the eight percent increase, which is annual and has, but has been historically tied into our rates. Since the bonds were applied for, for water and sewer, um, can't remember which year now. Can we recall the bonds? It, it was a couple of years before I started, there weren't new water sewer bonds taken out. And part of that rate analysis that Baker Tilly did at that time was, in order to get those bonds, the city had to commit to eight percent annual increases at minimum. So I've budgeted for that increase, but this will be amended most likely based on what Baker Tilly comes back for.
Right.
But I, I don't know what that will be, so I didn't wanna put a number in there beyond eight percent.
So he said, this is where I didn't understand this last part, I was hoping for more understanding, I should say. He made it seem like we were gonna have to offset that outside of the enterprise fund for the project downtown, was that?
For the public works.
So the, I thought the water sewer could only bear eighty grand apiece, and now it's about half of that.
And he was talking to pay for the public works facility, the DPW building itself, not the infrastructure and the iron renewable plant and all that. So he was looking at, at two separate projects, it legally has to be, and it's not able to be now, but it will be, that's what these new rates he's gonna calculate. He's gonna come to us and say, you can't get away with just an eight percent, you've gotta do a fourteen percent, or whatever he says, to afford this new bond to pay for the other. Um, the, the DPW building, because it's sort of a hybrid thing that services water sewer as well as streets. We can pay for a portion of it out of water sewer, but not the entirety, whereas the other projects that are purely water sewer, we're legally obligated to pay for them with our water sewer.
So that answers that question, um. Actually, this is something Dan's brought up to me in the past, but does it make sense with increasing water sewer rates to adjust the admin expense allocation internally here? To give theirs, give that some relief, I know that impacts our carryover at the bottom, um, but an effort to give some relief to the water bills, is that a good idea?
So right now, it's very minimal, um, our transfer to general to cover admin is fifty-eight hundred a year, at least. For, for a, you know, multi-million dollar budget, that's like nothing in admin. Yeah, I wish that was up, yeah, a lot of places pad that up, we don't have any padding there. Yeah, that's, that's bare bones.
Yeah.
I'm curious, um, you had mentioned to me the other day something so new that you've gotten about potential profiteering, um.
Yes, so.
I'm assuming that's not reflected in what you.
It's not at all, because it's very, very preliminary, um, but Patrick was at the meeting, um, we had a very wonderful conversation, it's public knowledge now.
Yeah, it's public, yeah, we were in close touch.
Yeah, so we sat, we, um, we, the landfill had approved, moving forward with the contract, um, for the next twenty years to capitalize on natural renewable gas. Plan that's going to be built at full risk of the vendor, um, not, not borne by the landfill with a potential revenue sharing. That could, if, if we play it correctly, have a mechanism whereby some of that revenue, rather than just going directly to the landfill, could indirectly come back to the owners of, the municipal owners of the landfill, which includes city of Buchanan. How much that could be, what it would look like, it's very up in the air at this point, but the opportunity is very real.
Yeah, so to add on to kind of just comments there, so the landfill is already selling natural gas to be turned into, it's turned into energy right now, and we sell it to Holland. They pretty much, Holland Company, Callanier does it, um, we're gonna convert and build a, there's gonna be a thirty million dollar facility built out there. Not by the taxpayer, by a private company, which is, is gonna convert the gas and pump it directly into Semco's pipeline. So we increased our negotiations to, from revenue share, gross revenue share fifteen percent to seventeen and a half on Wednesday. And then, which the landfill's bare bones increase is expected to be nearly half a million dollars in revenue, low, low end. Right now, it's about seven hundred and fifty, eight hundred thousand a year, um, but where gas rates are, that's basically at like three dollars something, the current market rates are eight dollars. So there's a lot of money there, with the landfill and as a board needs to decide is how much of that seventeen and a half percent are they willing to shave off? Because, and, and to return back to the taxpayer base. Outside of the ongoing maintenance of the landfill, perpetual care of the landfill, um, and all their capital out as well. So we're probably guessing, what do you think, one to half a percent to one percent is probably what the board is gonna negotiate amongst ourselves. Out of gross revenues, so.
I mean, there's, it's not gonna be a massive influx of money, 'cause it's gonna go split up by what?
That's, that's revenue, that's revenue.
It, it's something, right?
They give you revenue.
It's, it's a very exciting project, very, it's, it's, it's a really, really cool project, actually, so, but. Alright, sorry.
Yeah, no, so those, those were the big things, everything else is pretty, pretty much carryover from previous year, not any major changes in any other funds. Um, I do not have programmed into major or local streets, the twenty twenty-three projects, those will come in the form of budget amendments. And they will have to be determined by engineers, we don't even have preliminary numbers for you to plug in there yet, I don't want to stick something wildly off in there, so.
Well, for discussions, is there anything, anybody was hoping to see in this year's budget that we might not have hit on, that we can talk about a little bit?
And for me, I was hoping to see us have another officer to, specific to downtown, because I was wondering, I was preparing myself for it. And then giving some more in parks, like those were two things I wanted to make sure we had allocated funds for. That's what I was, you, you thought that?
I thought that was, that was.
Yeah, I, I was thinking.
Cause I had talked a tip about that.
Police, police downtown were one of the major.
So, your question about Barb, Patrick?
Just because of what it is.
You answered my question about Barb, I'm, I, I know you have numbers there.
Okay. Okay, I should have.
It doesn't necessarily have to translate into our, what our strategy is with Barb, and which part we're gonna do, just that we have money allocated, and we're intentional about doing something.
Yes, absolutely.
What that is, it doesn't have to be discussed.
Hopefully, grant match money, right, really make it worthwhile.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree, completely agree.
And, and the north end is gonna be one of our priorities there, I, I would hope.
Yep, and so I should show you under, cause it, it's just where it's housed currently, and once we get the new treasure envoy, I'm hoping she'll help me rebuild the spine of the budget like I've been wanting to do. So I don't have to stick so many things under city manager, but, or city commission, you know. But right now, there is a large number, two hundred and twenty thousand under grants and special projects, similar to the two twenty we had programmed and the one eighty-five we spent this year. Uh, under city commission budget for grants and special projects, that's where we were spending for, um, basically, it's, it's where we're taking the marijuana revenues and utilizing those. And effectuating the expenditure for the facade grants and that sort of thing. And it's not an elegant way to deploy out of budget, but it's possible.
That's, that is a big piece that we didn't talk about, sorry. We have three hundred and thirty thousand dollars in, or something like that, DDA money, where is that?
That is not programmed to be spent anywhere specifically, my thought was, since we have the main street board in its infancy, let them develop a plan, present it to the commission. And let you guys decide if you wanna take any of their recommendations for how to spend that.
Is everybody, I think the whole commission here, kind of let this charge, but is everybody accepting when that money needs to stay with what the DDA was intended for?
Well, I think when we, when we broke it up, sorry, when we, when, when we covered the DDA, we had, we had promised the people that were really disappointed in us doing that. That we were going to spend that money downtown, so I think it's important to hopefully, um, you know, stick to our word and, and use that as downtown development base somehow.
It's what the spirit is, when the money is, yeah, collected, yeah.
Yeah, it's collected for that particular reason, and it can, yeah, Sean, I think it needs to stay in the downtown area, you know, no matter. Who complains about it, or whatever, you know.
I mean, it's their money.
Yeah.
I mean, it's their money.
Yeah, you know.
Yeah, so as of now, Main Street isn't a formal board yet, they're still working on becoming certified through the Michigan Main Street Program. Once they become as such, I'm hoping to have a more clear delineation on the budget of what their proposed expenditures are, and have that be clear that it's funded to the downtown.
Okay, so maybe before that meeting happens, if we could have a discussion as a group on, uh, at least what we think before they meet and build their plan.
Okay, yeah, absolutely.
And then, I, I do like that they are gonna build a plan, though.
Yeah.
And at least they know where our heads are before they start.
So maybe just some sort of a commissioned work session for break serving on ideas to break to the Main Street, or?
Might just be an agenda item, so we don't have to schedule a separate meeting, but, I mean, maybe it is, maybe it isn't.
Yeah, I'm good with either one. But no, that's, everything else is largely the same, so based on what I've heard today, I'm going to reduce from seven to five. And couple that with the request to, to, to take to Matt Derby and figure out the best way to move forward with that five, whether it's across the board or performance review based on his opinion, um.
So what was that last part in your?
No, no, you were just fine, I was just saying, I'm going, based on the comments I've heard, I'm gonna reduce down the pay increases from seven to five. And make them not take immediate effect, but based on performance review if approved by Matt Derby. Um, and we, we went back and forth a couple of times, but I wasn't sure what the clear consensus was on the housing director, do you guys want me to back that out of the budget for now? And reassess it later, or do you want me to put it into contractual, or leave it as is, and then bump it up to sixty-five? There were a few different things that were talked about, so I wanted to see what you guys, which direction you want me to go, with just how, and again, this is just our plan, it doesn't mean we're stuck and still doing this.
True. I think, in my opinion, if you're comfortable with it, I personally, I think with the, with the, uh, placemaker project that is being started. Having somebody comfortable, or somebody familiar with our community, I mean, I'd rather pay Tim than pay an outside contractor to come in here, because I think we're all on the same page, that that hasn't been working. Um, so, I mean, that's my opinion.
Yeah, I was in favor of adding inspection, meaning that was half enough TV essentially, right? Um, focusing more on ordinance to start, and then maybe re, coming at it at midpoint, see if we accomplish what we wanted to accomplish on the ordinance front before we talk about the housing support.
So it's like you need the money, budget it there, but don't roll it out until we've got the ordinances in place, so that there's a structure before the rollout, and see if we need that expenditure, or take it out.
I, I would say take it out, because I think we're gonna need it.
Okay.
I think we're gonna need it in other areas, especially if that seven fifty number ends up not shaking out, and how these bond expenditures are gonna shake out, I, I think we're gonna need it. And, and frankly.
Correspondingly, then what I'll do is if I back that out, I'll also back out, so it'll actually have a, um, slightly negative effect on the budget, just because I was actually paying. Well, you know, actually, it'll probably be close to the same, let me find the revenue I had tied to it.
Actually, I would rather see that money shifted to that other officer position, but I don't know how everybody else feels, I don't even hope I cut.
I, and mine could be long-term, I mean, I'm just thinking long-term, I, I've, we're in such a weird place, that, we're in such a weird world right now, and. But, you know, as we talked about numerous times, that our infrastructure is, is just falling apart, we have to rebuild, we don't have a choice. I don't wanna drink out of plastic bottles, and, so we have to look at every option on how we can cut our costs and, and pay for some of these things that we have to do, you know, right? It's not what we wanna do, it's what we need to do, so.
So.
I'm just, I'm just speaking broadly, is, I think we need to consider cutting everything, we need to look at everything and figure out where we can cut, that, that includes our police and fire.
So for now, would it be fair to say back out to forty-five until we have a firmer decision about what we do, and then also back out to corresponding revenue, which wouldn't go to zero? I'd probably put it back to about twenty-five, because this past year we did about twenty-six.
License and permit. So you don't think when we incre, you don't think when we increase that inspection position to full-time, that we're gonna recapture that revenue?
The permit, I do think we're going to, I just think that I budgeted for about half of what I think annually will give, because I figured it would be about half of the year before we start collecting regularly, you know.
Oh, I see, yeah.
I mean, I find we're reducing revenues in here, it's just, I mean.
So.
Which is more deserved, is.
And we did it in this.
Yeah, so I dropped this down, dropped this down back to the twenty-five, or let's just say thirty, because we were close to thirty this year.
I, I think your inspection, your inspection group's got a nice base already set out for it, they'll be able to implement. A lot faster than I think we're giving credit for, I think they'll be able to do it.
I think once you, once you decide to turn them loose, you're, you're right, I mean, I, you know, if, if you talk to them. You know, they've been trying to work with their hands tied, and basically, I, I think this'll, I think this'll turn them loose a little bit. Going back to this ordinance officer now, you know, where exactly do we wanna go with that?
So that, so we, we said, we're not gonna do the director's spot now.
Right.
But we're gonna hire that inspection individual, so enforcement can be done at a higher level than we're doing today.
So I, I'm making a.
We're gonna low house sign, excuse me.
For the inspection individual, this way I took that conversation.
Okay, when you say inspection individual, do you mean like the, well, how we talked about using the part-time fire department?
To increase them to a full-time role, right, and that would plan, did I misunderstand that?
So my proposal was to have a completely new hire, independent of anyone we currently have, who would be the housing and co-enforcement administrator. And that we would ultimately increase their hours, but keep them part-time, and, and have that person administer them part-time to do inspections.
So I thought the issue right now with the individual being part-time is that it needed to be a full-time role to incorporate the rental inspection component. I think they could handle a good chunk of commercial, but they couldn't take on all the residential inspection.
So the largest part of the residential that's time-consuming is the admin side, that's why I wanna make the administrator the full-time person. And let them spread the wealth, as it were, amongst the fire department, so there's not one person bumping up to full-time, we keep, we don't have to pay additional fringes to several people. We're only paying some additional hours to the folks who are already part-timers.
I think in the, in the long run, that's going to be much cheaper than.
I thought that it would be.
I mean, especially the fringe, fringe of, I said.
Fringe of.
Cause the admin person is the one who has the capacity to pay for themselves exponentially in the grant rating.
Right. Right. Where does the fringe of, it's getting really expensive in the long term.
But we're saying Tim would, I think that's where we go back to that whole conversation about Tim, he would absorb the oversight of that. And there'd be an additional approval for expenditures, increasing that part-time to focus on inspections more.
That's not what I was contemplating.
That's where my head is at, this whole time, is, we're gonna make Tim be that oversight over ordinance, because when he shifts his duties away from chief. Lots of our intent focuses to go do that, and working with the three Bs, and what was the other one? There's another task that we have down here, I feel like, I'm gonna miss something.
You, you, you mean all the ordinances in general and, and training to achieve.
That's where my head is at.
So you still, you still have a new hire in there at forty-five?
No, I just took, I just took it out just now, because that's what I thought you guys were saying, but I can put it back in.
I think it's, what's, what's the part-timer cost us now for inspections?
What's that?
What's the part-time individual costing us today, twenty grand for it?
Yeah, definitely.
So I'd say, I'd say you have admin expense at at least twenty-five thousand increased, because you're gonna make, you'd make that individual full-time, right? Or do you not like that?
I, I don't, personally, for, from our operational standpoint, I don't think that's the best move.
And then is that because you don't think? And then is that because you don't think Tim can absorb the admin component of managing that individual? Or not, that's not the right way to put that, but.
I'm confused, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not following.
So I don't understand what adding a body is going to do.
That's because that person would be the administrator of all code enforcement, all rental inspections and also administer all grants and write out grants for housing and administer all those programs.
So right.
Because we currently have none of that really going on.
I'm saying.
Which I believe.
Well, I'm saying limiting the component of that job today. And then it's ordinance oversight, which I, I do believe is under Tim. And the only expenditure you're gonna increase is increasing, we keep saying it's John, so it's increasing him to a full-time role. He can, I think that individual's going to absorb some admin components of that and Tim would be the oversight of it all because he's public safety and ordinances, right, we're saying he's gonna be going through all this ordinance stuff.
We could budget for that to be a possibility, but I don't know enough about him as an individual to recommend that as course of action.
John.
Yeah.
Well, I think, and you know, if you're trying to do is avoid full-time employment for a warm environment because of the expense of.
Especially since we need to be flexible coming into a potential authority to not have full, we are currently, we don't have that.
Full-time, yeah, I mean, I would say we avoid that.
Maybe, maybe just with, you know, add a full-time body anyways, is what we're saying. So you're gonna have a full-time.
We are, they're gonna do more than just inspections, whereas if you, if we, if we pay job teams full-time, it, it's really to do inspections as well.
Yeah. And the admin component of the inspection, I mean, I, I go, it's, I'm struggling with, we're taking a lot off of Tim's play and I know he can do a lot, I have a ton of confidence in him, but I'm wondering.
See, and I feel, I feel like we're adding as much as that ordinance plate that we're taking off because the, the amount of time and resources it's gonna take for him to review that code, if it's very likely to do it really well and also train the new chief is, is actually pretty substantial. I mean, even if he wasn't trained chief, just doing that code and doing it well, we would probably easily be paying a hundred fifty thousand dollars in attorney fees to get that accomplished and then to have it done correctly.
And I, and in my opinion, I, I, you know, I look at, if, so what do you, if you add that person to do that, what was the, what was the amount of money asked? Probably raise it from forty to sixty or something.
We talked that, um, I, I put in very conservatively forty-five, but I thought sixty-five was more appropriate, it sounded like you guys thought that was more appropriate to get a qualified individual. Um, so that would be my recommendation is to keep it, um, budgeted in there at six, at, like, increase it to sixty-five, which still gives us a significant amount of carryover. I, I truly believe that the way I'm suggesting it allows the flexibility for us to move into a potential fire department authority much more readily than if we have a full-time fire department, even if it's just one person and we've got to figure out what that looks like. Right now, we don't owe any of them anything per se from legal standpoint.
Can I be much more?
I think we do, I think the more flexible we are, the more.
So I think you're reflecting more of a long-term view and prepping for a long-term event, just necessarily this budget, which I think is important to consider.
It is. It is, cause I'm trying to view that in two to three years' time, I mean, this is a budget-neutral recommendation to begin with, it's not costing the budget anything the way I proposed it and I don't think it will, um, but in two to three years, I think that that role will be very budget-positive for the city of Buchanan in many ways. I think it'll show net revenue that we can bring back in the administrative fees of the grants that they write, that we can put towards one-on-one and decreasing fees. Um, but additionally, I think that it's going to substantially increase our tax base, which is what we've, you know, our long-term strategy, I think, has been and should be. As we just saw, the more we do that successfully, the more we actually can, that's the only way to, in a good way, reduce the tax rate for our citizens.
And on top of that, it also will help us as we discuss what we're going to do with the fire department potentially in the future without having full-time fire department employees, which we, we don't have, we've never, we haven't.
No, we have full-time fire. Oh, yeah, you have full-time fire chiefs, but, you know, and, and Dan brought that up, Dan said something about the fire chief, you know, that's, that's a potential right there. You're, you're gonna have to go to that.
That'd be a shared expense.
But, yeah, that would be a shared.
That'd be, yeah, it's a shared position.
But it's gonna be a lot more than like the five grand or whatever we're paying now.
Right, yeah, you know, you aren't, you aren't gonna retain my habits for that.
No, right.
And, you know, uh, so, yeah, that's, that's gonna be a, a bid-type opportunity for somebody, but, you know, when you talk about that fire authority, it's, it's a, it's a major job along with what Tim gave us, is gonna be doing, you know, for public safety.
I, I just would rather see my son have another officer downtown. That's just my take, but.
I'm all in favor of that.
We, we could, it's, that's just gonna be a, a pure budget negative, not that that's bad then, but, so we, we could do both or we could do one or the other, whatever you guys are thinking.
I mean, I, I, I don't know, I mean, in the, what, what am I gonna say? In the long term, looking at the budget as a whole, I think what we're talking about is really miniscule in, in the budget, I mean.
So what's wrong with taking a, a six-month approach while we build up the ordinance component of it? And then, so sixty thousand, you know, we're, we're gonna, we're talking about thirty dollar, thirty thousand dollar budget amendment, so sixty thousand dollar budget amendment potentially a year after we build up the ordinance component, which Tim's gonna be really focusing heavily, heavily on getting infrastructure in that.
And see, and that's the part where, and again, I'm not saying it's not possible, but from my viewpoint, I don't think Tim would be as effective at, at that as if we were to just right from the get-go hire someone who specializes in that field and could, and take on that component, because Tim has never administered those types of code enforcement, so they're housing-specific, that's not in his real house.
I just, I still can't get my head, or taking all of this stuff off display, he's gonna be focusing on ordinances, how he's not gonna be able to handle this, but it's an ordinance-driven role, that's just, I, I can't wrap my head around. It's like we're selling them short, I feel like, and I don't think.
I, I think the best way to do this may be ask Tim's perspective, but again, I'm, I'm projecting based on conversations I've had with him that he's like, I don't know, I have to pretend for a role.
So, so going before you say something, I apologize, because we're talking long-term plan, right?
Yeah.
When, if Tim's gonna retire in two years, wouldn't you expect the person that replaces him, that is gonna be heavily ordinance-focused to be able to absorb that then at that point? Where we hire an individual of public safety that can handle all aspects of the ordinance.
So from, so my long-term plan was that having the chief and the public safety director disengaged is a short-term thing. From my long-term standpoint, to make the best impact on the budget, is we're, we're spending extra to get a really good continuous transition and also fix our ordinance issues, which we would spend more at the back end being an attorney to do. And then after Tim retires, give Harvey a slight pay bump that's justified by making him also public safety director again, so he would be back to where Tim was before.
But all that ordinance work would be done.
And that individual would be in place to support it.
And then the budget's really shaved down.
Yeah, and you, yeah.
So if we go with that method, then a contractual role seems to make more sense to me, right? Cause it's intended to be short-term, is that wrong?
I, I view it as the housing director is a full-time, long-term position, that will be at Buchanan definitely, is the way I picture it. Someone will perpetually write grants for housing, um, renewal and regular implementation for those already in their homes and also assist us in writing grants to bring in housing developments that are middle-market, middle-income market rate housing, to fill those gaps.
I think we'll get a question, Rich will want to be prepared, but next time he asks a question about, we can all focus on destroying grants and a lot of individuals in City Hall, and any question will come up is, isn't, has someone rich's responsibility to, it's what some.
So it's, it's a capacity thing, I mean, it comes down to, I mean, the, the, the fact that we aren't possibly gonna get one and a half to two million dollars worth of grants has been a lot of work and if we get that, it will be a lot of work to sustain the administration of those grants and the reporting, we will not have the capacity rate for more.
So then, does it make sense to, instead of hiring a sixty-five thousand dollar director, hire thirty-five, forty thousand dollar additional head? That's really gives Rich more belief, does that make more sense?
I don't personally think so, but if you guys think so, I'm open to that.
I'm, I'm just trying to.
Yeah.
Think about it in different scenarios. Cause I, I think the question will come up, you know, Rich's, a lot of Rich's role has changed from a public perception standpoint of he's focusing so much on grant work, uh, which is great because if we're getting dollars, that means it's valuable, um.
I think what we've done, and it shows in the tax base, is we've made Buchanan exponentially busier than it was even two years ago before I started. City Hall was kind of a ghost town when I started, there, there was no one coming in, no one coming out, not much happening. Now we are all, I mean, not to beat the dead horse, but this is an example, I, I, I work, I regularly work fourteen-hour days, I, I can't continue to do that. Today I worked a twenty-four hour plus day, I'm happy with that. And Rich does similar, and we just, we're not.
I don't like that one.
Yeah. So. So right now I've taken it out, is that, and we'll just leave it like that for now and then you guys wanna discuss it more later? Or do you guys feel like you have a consensus for now you wanna move forward or just leave it a subtle address more firmly to later date for your guys' thoughts?
Well, actually, didn't we, didn't we say we should come back to this at a later date anyway?
Yep, absolutely.
And maybe, maybe we, we need to look at it.
I mean, I don't, I mean, I mean, that position doesn't change the budget.
Yeah, talk more to Tim about it, yeah. No, no, it doesn't, so that's why, that's why I took it out, because it's something we can easily do a bunch of them in four years if you guys want more time to think about it.
Right, right.
Let's, I like that plan, I really do.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't affect the budget you do there really, honestly.
I, I, how do you guys feel, cause to me, it, I really would like to do another officer in downtown. I know it hurts the budget.
So I, I don't like the, I, like, like I say, I just have to say, you know, those company owners are like, I don't like the work that the police are doing right now. I don't think they're doing anything, they're not handing out tickets, they're not enforcing, I still see track and trailers going through town that aren't being pulled over. I see people speeding, doing U-turns, jaywalking in front of people, acting like idiots. What are they doing now? And you wanna add another person to, to do nothing, is that, I mean, so that's how I feel, I'm a little frustrated with the police force right now.
That's a fair statement, and I think the feedback that I've seen from Tim is they only have two officers on duty to patrol a whole town.
I know, but, but, but everybody's saying, well, why do they need to be patrolling, um, Detroit Street? Other than Dan says on his porch, there's nothing to do on Detroit Street, stay downtown, like, we need to focus our energy downtown. We don't need cops looking for stray dogs, we don't need cops looking for neighbors knocking on doors. I mean, that, so that would be my argument is to add even another thing is, let's redirect our focus on the problem area, which is downtown. And I, I mean, I'm not gonna lie, I'm pretty frustrated with watching the idiocy that goes on downtown. We've repeatedly said stuff in meetings about cars doing U-turns, people speeding, parking the wrong way.
Well, I, and, and I think Patrick's idea is that, you know, having a new off, having a, adding a new officer to be basically downtown would alleviate all of that, but, you know, we gotta get a little bit more strict on that whole thing. Also, my opinion is now, you know, you, you need to, you need to enforce, just like you said, with, with the truck traffic, with the U-turns. Uh, yeah, even, even the pedestrian traffic that some of them know, uh, they can, yeah, that, you know, I walk out front, you're gonna stop. You know, I mean, we've seen this, the, the, the articles that we receive on that, but, uh, you know, that, that can be taken care of.
Well, I guess my point is, you know, we're always looking for ways to cut costs and to be effective and efficient. Before we hire someone else, we should look at our, what we're doing overall and, and see what we can do differently with the resources we already have that would make a change rather than hiring someone new. That would be where I would say start before we hire someone else, because if you add in their salary and the fringe benefits, then the already, what I believe is too high for our police is going to go up even more.
Yeah, that's.
It's a percent.
Yeah, and, and you have a fair, a fair statement.
And this is not my idea, pass it on, two individuals in town, he said, why don't we do what Niles Township did? Did they eliminate the whose department and just pay the county?
Well, that's because they're a township.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, that's different, because we're a city, maybe is that a fair statement?
If, yeah, to, to qualify as a city, you have to offer a full service, um, technically you can contractually do so. So, I mean, it is a possibility, but logistically, it, it's not usually the best course. I've, I've not seen any communities where it's successful in my definition of success.
I, I mean, I, I mean.
We, we have to lower milage more likely, because we're saying we're, we're charging you these milage rates to supply your police department.
Oh, yeah, no, we would have to.
Yeah, and it would come as a.
No, no, it's a, it's a.
And I, I think we're all on the same page, you only, you know, there, there's a different, we need to do more with downtown.
We will, I, I think that's, yeah.
We have to be, we have to be more proactive right now downtown.
And that's why I would say just focusing on how we're currently operating is not working. This goes all the way back to last year and, um, it was the, the slap-on-the-wrist type thing that, that I brought up a couple times that we need to start cracking it up, and this is three or four months ago when I said this in a meeting. We keep handing out warnings, there's untelling, and we keep handing out warnings and it's not working.
Yeah, the twenty-five dollar ticket was gonna scare the, you know.
July, is that what we're hoping to is?
Can I ask one more question? Is there anything in the budget for Culver going out to?
Now I sound like Norma, I feel like Norma.
Is there anything? I did, I just had a revelation, or is there anything in the budget for the retention wall?
So I think that's gonna, the Culver, standing, correct me if I'm wrong, would end up living within the bond for the DPW project.
That's three years away.
No, no, that'll be, we had that meeting last, last mission meeting where we're trying to figure out how we're gonna pay for all that. We don't know what the bond payment's gonna be. See, if you're saying absorb another three hundred and fifty thousand plus dollars into the carryover, the answer is no, it can't take it. That's why it has to be amortized.
So we tore the DPW building down not knowing how to pay for the new one?
The Culver is separate, Culver's separate issue, so the answer is no, it's not anybody.
No. But, 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 but before we get off on a different thing, if we could finish the conversation about the police officer, because I think it's, I mean, I think we're all arguing the same thing, honestly, that we want more attention downtown, right?
We need more.
And I would make the suggestion that before we hire someone new, we just look at how we're currently operating and see if we can get something a little bit differently to get more of a presence downtown with the current officers.
I, I'd love it.
And, and, you know, we need to be more strict. So I, I, I think, I think that, that whole thing, you know, we need to see, I, I know John Leonard, I love John Leonard, but he's been a friend for a long time. His big complaint was, well, I'm sitting on one side of the street, guy does a U-turn on the other side of the street, well, I can't get out. Well, then position yourself to where.
It doesn't, you turn your lights on and you gotta do whatever you had to.
I see a guy, you know, just turn around in the intersection of Main Street, you know, first Larry Money thinks he can, you know, stop an individual and, you know, and, you know, hell, well, that's, that's, that doesn't matter, you know, that, that's the whole thing, but I mean, uh.
You're like an idiot, Johnny.
Yeah, but, you know, just those kind of things, I'm going, you know, we need to have a cop right here, um.
But I think if we make that statement to our police force in a meeting officially, that we would like to see something different happen downtown.
And for what it's worth, they're working towards it, I think it's great to have that conversation, because they'll be able to have some metrics too. Um, I spoke with Tim and at the last department meeting, we emphasized to the entire PD, in their dailies, they're going to start actively tracking the time dedicated to downtown on their daily, so that after every shift, they can show each individual how much time they spent in the downtown.
And seeing their difference, I've seen a car down there more and more, but still, people are still.
Yeah, but we, we wanna keep that into that.
I'm just expecting Tim to come back with, because just on conversations I've been having with him, like, we're straining the resources that we have.
I know, I, that's always the other thing.
Yeah, I know, right, so I'm just gonna prepare ourselves for it.
And police staff, you know, there's a timeframe that this all happens, you know, I mean.
Yeah, right. Between ten and four.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not sure, but I know at certain points, there's nobody there.
Thank you.
So, do you, do we still have, um, monitoring systems for all the vehicles in city limits or in the city?
The, something like the GPS units, yeah.
They're used to. Yeah, still do that.
We have them, my understanding is we have them on the DPW plow trucks. We have, um, our auto monitoring systems that are PD-specific, like your body cams.
Great, you're a buddy.
You go north.
No, not this week, soccer and.
Well, I am going north, I'm going down again.
See you later.
I believe the system you're referring to, unless I'm mistaken, was for the DPW plow trucks and it showed it would, it would bump if they went outside the city limits and they used it to track certain routes, um, I believe that's something that was very recently cut because it wasn't being utilized. Um, but I believe that the PD still has PD-specific and it's not the same system, but it does the same thing. Now, there, they have cameras that turn on, but I think, I think that there's also a system that tracks location coordinates along with that for downtown.
And now I think our, our agenda's gonna include Clay Compani, are, are we pretty much in agreement with that whole position or, or?
I don't, I don't really have a problem with it personally.
I, I, yeah, well, you know, yeah, you, I wanna bring this up. I, I, yeah, well, you know, yeah, I wanna bring this up before they laugh.
Yeah.
Just so we don't have, you know, this huge discussion on that that takes up.
Well, and I think unfortunately sometimes what happens is, you know, when we're talking about a position, it turns into Clay, the person, and then should be.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what, that's the thing.
I, that, that, that's.
Yes, no, I, I agree.
And, you know, I, I just hope that, you know, if, if the venture doesn't work, then, you know, we can always back out of it. But I mean, uh, that I'm just wondering that, so we don't have that lengthy discussion and like you said, a lot of times it just may be.
It turns into a personal thing where, where we're hammering on Clay, which isn't fair.
Yeah, which is really not appropriate and definitely annoys morale and really invites me to our chart to be honest as well.
Right, it's, it's the position that we're discussing. We should be discussing the position, not the, I mean, so really we should eliminate Clay's name from the conversation. It should be about the position of street, direct our streets or.
Yes, it should, no names.
Yeah, 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 absolutely. It's our recommendation.
Yeah, the, the, it's purely a public policy question and the question is, do you through your public policy decision-making through budget appropriations, wanna approve this change in this department or not?
Cause I think it'd be appropriate to, uh, investigate him and I wanna see what he pays for that position rather than just say a ten percent rate for this position.
I, I can try to get some comparables from other communities. Um, do you want across the board state comparables? Cause that's what they provide. Or do you only want them from communities in our region, only bits, small to mid-sized communities? Like there's a lot of nuance to what that looks like.
I, I would say something in our population size would be appropriate. I mean, comparable communities would probably make sense.
I, because I don't think you wanna, I don't think you wanna include.
I don't know if I have time to do that by Monday, cause honestly, I'm, I'm gonna do it. It's a time off. I'm gonna sleep all day today. I would like to spend Sunday with my family.
I would imagine you need some sleep. But I would think you don't wanna include like Detroit Metro or, cause you're gonna get some crazy skewed numbers, so. Other than that, I'm comfortable with everything I see.
Yeah.
And I thank you for staying up while we ended up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ridiculous that you have to do that.
So if anyone thinks of anything more, uh, call me or shoot me an email, but otherwise we'll make changes we discussed and send that out.
Okay, thank you. Homekeeper of Germany, say hi.
Hi.
I really do appreciate you.
Yeah, thanks.
Reviewing your retirement.
Yeah. Kind of a lesson there, yeah. You see me yesterday? You kinda cringed. Cause you knew what you was in store for, so. And, uh, thank you, Dale, for being here.
Because he's, most of the time, your eyes are that full.
I, no, I don't know how she's awake right now. She's talking. It's been a long week.
He told me I would have it beginning of the week. So I'm hoping to add.
Did your, did your previous budget being something, with bill was out here, did they hold this?
A phone, right? Was that the? Yeah.
Precise, I guess, I.
Well, I don't know. I think it's what I thought. Um, they skipped over so much. They did. Bill would just get that whole thing. You know, I mean, they're, it was honestly, I don't think it was as in-depth. Like Bill would just tell us, this is this and this is what you need to approve. Like there was no discussions about what do you want to change. I don't ever think that question ever happened in previous.
I, I would, I would just wonder when we sit there, you know, we started looking at this stuff.
I mean, loo- looking back, we, we were kept in the dark about a lot of things in the past.
Oh, I'm sure you were. I mean.
Things that.
And we, and we still know a whole lot.
And we didn't even know, you know, we didn't even know better than, so we were just kinda like, oh, this.
And there were some things, I bet you, I, I come down here.
We were trusting them to guide us in the right direction and they were. That was true, yeah.
I, there were things that I probably came down here and asked him, being, you know, I, I, not who I was. But I mean, I had a question that you guys probably didn't even know about and, you know, him and JT would fill me in that.
Well, they had their own little.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm saying. That, it was the, it, it was the click.
They had their own little thing. But I mean.
And, you know, and sometimes I was privy to some of the information and sometimes I, I wasn't. And, you know, that's where you got a bad taste or something.
That's something like the bottom.
Huh?
That's something like the bottom. I mean, just out of curiosity, I have to, I, I, as we keep moving forward and I'm learning more and more to.
Thank you, ladies.
Bye, have a good day.